Good evening. This meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Will everyone please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colonel Clark, can you call the roll?
Chair Truesdale?
Present.
Vice Chair Ellsworth?
Here.
Commissioner Goins?
Excused.
Commissioner Evans?
Also excused.
Commissioner Trobridge?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengus?
Here.
And just, we need to make a couple of announcements before we start. There are several general plan amendments on the agenda this evening, and with the absence of the two commissioners and the requirement for the supermajority, everyone will need to be voting. If there's an abstention, we'll allow the applicant to address that at the time. Also, for all of you here this evening, there are cards up here near the agendas, survey cards, and these are survey cards put out by the Planning Commission, or Planning Department, I'm sorry. We don't have a survey for us, but, and we would appreciate if you'd take, there's just a few questions, none of them are difficult, and we ask that you please take a moment and fill those out. And then, I want to make one other announcement. Today was Take Your Child to Work Day. I hope all of you availed yourselves of that, and fortunately, my daughter is well past those years, but I had her bring her special friend Haley down this evening, and...
They're always here, she's on camera.
The important things we do for our kids. Can we have a motion on the minutes for the February 11, 2010, and March 25, 2010 Planning Commission meeting? May I move for approval?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will have to be abstaining on the minutes on February 11, as I was absent, but I will vote for the other.
Okay. Any other abstentions or comments? Then, there's a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And those are approved with the noted abstention of Commissioner Trobridge.
Mr. Chairman, if we go forward, may I say something briefly?
Sure.
This is along the lines of the Take Your Child to School Day, although just a little different, I want to say hello to my mother-in-law. She had open-heart surgery yesterday, and she's lying in the hospital, and I think she's watching this. I hope so. If so, I wish you well, Grandy. I get better soon. Thank you.
Now, let's go to our housekeeping items. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Items 21 and 22, the applicant has requested that these items be held in abeyance to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting to allow them to be heard with a related application. Items 29 and 30, the applicant has requested these items be held in abeyance to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting to allow them to be heard with a related application. Item 41, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting to allow for revisions to the request. Item 42, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the July 29 Planning Commission meeting. Item 44, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item 48, the applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the May 27 Planning Commission meeting. And Item 49, the applicant has requested this item be tabled.
Okay. These items were listed as public hearing items. If there's anybody here that wished to make comment on any of these items, we'll take comment with regards to just the abeyance only, seeing no one close to a public hearing. If there are no other comments, we have a motion on our housekeeping items. May I still move? Okay. There's a motion to bring those forward, and for action, please cast your vote. And those are approved. Now, we go to our one motion. No consent.
Is that your consent?
Oh, okay, I knew that. Our consent items, which are routine items and can be passed at one motion, if they're Planning Commission or anybody in the audience which have either of those two items pulled from the consent agenda, please let us know, seeing no one will close the public hearing. Motion on Consent Items 8?
Six and seven.
Six and seven?
Eight and seven, or six and seven. Okay. EOT 37448, applicant owner HOF Financial One LLC. Item 7, EOT 37450, applicant owner HOF Financial One LLC. Motion?
May I move for approval as recommended?
There's a motion for approval? And those items are approved.
Those are both final action, unless appealed within 10 days.
Now, we go to our one motion, one vote. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they're considered routine, non-public hearing and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission, not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item 8, SUP 37566, applicant Walgreens Company, owner A&amp;M Lake Mead LLC. Item 9, SUP 37603, applicant owner Walgreens Company, owner Village Torrey Pines Partnership LP. Item 10, SUP 37605, applicant Walgreens Company, owner Lake West Las Vegas Properties LLC. Item 11, SUP 37617, applicant Rapid Cash, owner Resort Holdings One LLC. Item 12, SUP 37618, applicant Czech City, owner Fremont West LLC. Item 13, SUP 37624, applicant Czech City, owner Frenel &amp; Sons Cheyenne LLC. Item 14, SUP 37625, applicant Czech City, owner Construction Group Inc. Item 15, SUP 37626, applicant Czech City, owner Alco Enterprises Inc. Item 16, VAC 37574, applicant owner BCI Coca-Cola Bottling Company of Los Angeles. Are there any other items which to be, are any of these items which should be brought off the one motion, one vote? Seeing none, motion?
I have one question.
Please come down and give us your name.
Sure. Mike Ganson, G-A-N-S-O-N, 1100 South 6th Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. My question is, I understand that you're going to group the Walgreens motions for their planning acceptance all in one package, or are you going to hear them separately?
They're all individual items, but they're all under the one motion, one vote, so we'll take them in one motion, unless there's one particular location you'd like to be...
I'd like to separate the one on number 10, on Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston there, and I was wondering if the Commissioner for that district is he or she President?
The Commissioners here serve for all of the districts, so...
Well, I mean, isn't there one representing District 3?
They're individually appointed, but they serve the entire city.
I understand that, but is Commissioner Reese's appointee here?
No.
Okay, I, thank you.
Okay. But we'll pull 10 off of that. Any other items?
Thank you.
Seeing none?
May I move to pull item number 10 from the one motion, one vote agenda?
We just need the motion for all the rest.
Okay, then I'll move for approval of all of them, except for item number 10.
Okay. Is a motion for approval? Any comments? Please cast your vote. And those are approved, and...
They all go forward to council on May 19.
Okay. Now, we'll pull off item 10, and I'll read again, SUP 37605, applicant Walgreens Company, owner Lake West Las Vegas Partnership LLC, or Properties LLC, for a 79-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale within an existing 15,048-square-foot retail establishment at 1101 South Las Vegas Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for accessory package liquor sales. The location is, will not require any waivers, as there are no city parks, childcare facilities, churches, schools within the 400-foot distance separation. No more than 10% of the floor space is devoted to alcohol sales, and since the site location is compatible with surrounding land uses, staff recommends approval.
Before we go further, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I do own property in the notice area. While I don't think it affects this, I think in abundance of caution, I will abstain.
Hi.
The applicant, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, 300 South 4th Street, appearing on behalf of the applicant Walgreens. This is a request for a special use permit to add accessory package liquor off-sale to an existing Walgreens location on the corner of Charleston and Las Vegas Boulevard. There are other retail establishments with liquor in the area. It is a heavily commercial area because it is on the strip, and it meets the separation requirements, and we ask that you follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak on behalf of this matter, please come forward at this time.
Against or...
On this matter, yes.
Oh, yes, on this matter.
Again, Mike Ganson, 1100 South 6th, Las Vegas, Nevada. I live almost kitty-corner in the historic district, and even though we have a pornography shop, and Walgreens is selling drugs, and I think alcohol would, more alcohol in the neighborhood, you know, would go along with the philosophy of the neighborhood there, but I think that they haven't looked at it in depth enough that the Hart Mansion holds a religious organization, meetings there on occasions, and that is adjacent to the property, and also, they hold senior high school functions there, and it's sort of a dinner club of some kind that has minors there, and there is a problem with the homeless down here in the neighborhood, and I think that we already have enough problems in downtown Las Vegas with alcohol, and we've already had a real push to bring the people down to Las Vegas, and there's just too many stores selling alcohol in the area. Plus, I know that Walgreens does not prosecute its shoplifters. I had a Metro officer apprehend a shoplifter in my backyard, and I said, "Well, jeez", you know, and then he said, "Well, it's not going to do any good, because Walgreens management does not follow through with prosecuting shoplifters." I think the idea of bringing alcohol into my neighborhood is egregious behavior without them exactly explaining the social and economic impact that it brings to the neighborhood. And I'm sure if Metro were here today, they would tell you about the continual problem that they have with alcohol-related offenses in my neighborhood, and all of us up here will agree that alcohol is akin to liquid schizophrenia. People that live or hang out in the neighborhood down here in Las Vegas have an alcohol problem. There's a serious problem here, and I think by whether it's two square feet or five square feet, that I think their service of selling drugs in the neighborhood is enough. And then, I have continual problem. You can't walk in the store there without panhandlers, you know, and I can't believe in Las Vegas people without money. I mean, who could ever figure that one out? And it's a dangerous place to go into in the evenings, and their security is not getting backed up by Walgreens management for not prosecuting shoplifting, and I think it's just going to add to the problem of having alcohol be sold there. Plus, there's no trash containers, it's going to be a mess in the neighborhood, plus the idea of having people, you know, drunk, more drunk people in my neighborhood that don't have means. I mean, up in Summerlin, I'm sure you people have it fine up there, but down here where the enablers live, and all the cart pushers, the idea for them to be having an easier access, and they all know it, that Walgreens does not prosecute shoplifters. And it is serious. I mean, I wouldn't be down here telling you different. And it's a dangerous place to go into in the evening because there's, on the property, down in that area. And then, just this morning, I went into the Wells Fargo Bank, and there's people sleeping inside the alcove in there. I guess they're now a homeless shelter. I mean, what are you going to do? Try to make a deposit in the bank in the morning, and there's someone without means in the bank there waiting for you? And now, they're going to, these people, I mean, don't they make enough money doing something else? They got to be selling more booze in the neighborhood? We've got the Fifth Street Bar there, and if Metro was here, they would tell you if they want anything closed down there, it's the Fifth Street Bar down there, of all the problems they have there. And then, they got 7-Eleven across the street, and the containers, the mess of all the containers, not to mention what it does to the people of, you know, liquor is a thief of somebody's mind.
I don't mean to cut you off, about 30 more seconds, okay?
I'll finish up, yeah. I would really appreciate you not allowing them to sell liquor in my neighborhood. This is the historic district. I live in a binyan home, not that they were sober people either, but it's the idea, you know, that we can't really be promoting this in our neighborhood if we want downtown to become a place where it's safe, and we know that alcohol, you know, fills our jails right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I would agree with this last gentleman, that it would seem to me that a saturation of establishments in one area that sells booze, it seems like there's only so many customers, and it would dilute the earnings of each one. But even then, besides that, I would like the applicant, as the mayor pointed out yesterday, he was sharp, and he says, "How did these people come up with 79 square feet? I can see 80 square feet, I can see an even number, I cannot see an odd number on the square footage."
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in a minute? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pete Willis, I'm the district manager for Walgreens, and I'm very familiar with the store, and the store is not without its challenges, but what we want to do is add liquor, we're not trying to increase sales or...
Okay, so hold on a minute, you're with Walgreens?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a moment, please, because this is your council then here with you?
Yes.
Okay, well, hold on just a minute, let me see the other public matters, and then we'll come back and let you respond. Anyone else want to speak on this? Is it a public matter? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing now. We'd like to hear from you. Go ahead.
Okay. And what we're just trying to do is add convenience for our shoppers. It's going to be a selection, and, you know, people want to have dinner, bring some wine, they want to go see the draft, they want to grab a six-pack of beer and everything else. Now, so far as the crime and everything else in the neighborhood and everything else, we do prosecute shoplifters. We have done it in the past, so that's not true. We do do that. And we try to keep the neighborhood as safe as possible. You can pass by there right now. Will it be a little trash there? Well, with all the people going through it, it may be a little bit, but it's just as nice and clean as every place else. We do have a dumpster there, we do have people who go out and patrol, we do have security there. We do everything we can to be a part of this community, and we're willing to do anything else that this council thinks we should do, but we're offering the same thing that's offered across the street, down the street, wherever else, and we want to work with the community to make this, and I understand your concerns, but I promise you, we're going to do this right, okay? And we're going to do whatever we have to do to make sure it's taken care of and everything else. And here, we're trying not to, we're not going to sell low-volume liquor and all of that stuff, and it won't be people hanging out in front of the stores and everything else. We're going to do whatever we need to do to make sure this is right. So, that's not what we're trying to do. We want to be a part of this community, we have a vested interest in this community, and we want to make this work. All the thing we're trying to do is to make it convenient for the shoppers in this community. So, when they come in and they want to pick up a little groceries, and they want some wine to go with dinner, they can do it. If they want to come in and there's a ballgame, and they want to get some snacks, they can get some beer and wine to go home. That's all, this is about convenience, helping the community, making everything a little bit better, and that's all we're trying to do. And I guarantee you, if you go by the store anytime and take a look, you will see that we're doing everything we should be doing to make this better, so that's all I have to say.
All right, so all the conditions are outlined, are they acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I don't give a rebuttal or not?
Nope. Any comments?
I'll make a motion regarding item number 10, Special Use Permit 37605. Recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. And that motion is...
And that goes forward to the City Council on May 19.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we go to our public hearing items. Item 17, GPA 37216, applicant owner City of Las Vegas, request to adopt and update safety and seismic safety element of the 2020 master plan.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Andy Reed from Planning and Development Department. You received a copy of the updated safety element in last month's meeting package, and I'll now provide a brief overview of that update. Next slide, please. Nevada revised statutes require the preparation of both a safety plan and a seismic safety plan to be included in our master plan. We've combined those two plans into one element so that all the policies are in one document. We'd also note that the element was last updated in 2001. Since that time, the city's population has increased by 20%, number of dwelling units has increased by 22%, and the area of the city has increased by 18%. Next slide, please. In regard specifically to what's been updated, within the fire hazard section, we've updated the maps to include the location of six new fire stations constructed since the last update. In the flood hazard section, we've shown the location of two detention basins and 80 miles of storm drains and channels constructed since 2001. And in the noise section, we've included maps which address compatibility in regards to areas near airports and heliports. Next slide, please. The element is scheduled for City Council consideration on May 19, pending your recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. If anybody here wishes to speak on the side, then please come forward. Seeing none of closed public hearing, Commissioners, comments?
If there are, then I'll move for approval of item number 17.
Is a motion for approval? And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on May 19. Thank you. Now, we go to item 18, 19, and 20, or related items. Item 18, GPA 37467, applicant Arnold Stock, owner Mary Bartz's 22 LLC, from MXU, Mixed Use to C Commercial at 2100 Fremont Street. Item 19, ZON 37469, applicant Arnold Stock, owner Mary Bartz's 14 LLC, from R4 High Density Residential to C2 General Commercial on the west side of Eastern Avenue, approximately 160 feet south of Sunrise Avenue. Item 20, SDR 37470, applicant Arnold Stock, owner Mary Bartz's 14 LLC, at all for a proposed 90,595-square-foot shopping center with waivers of the Downtown Centennial Plan setback standards and Title 19 building placement standards at the southwest corner, southwest and northwest corners of Fremont Street and Eastern Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is comprised of two proposed parcels located on either side of Fremont Street, just west of Eastern Avenue. The requested general plan amendment and rezoning will provide for a consistent general plan designation and zoning district for the entire site. The majority of the site is located within the Downtown Centennial Plan, with the exception of the northern portion of the north parcel. Waivers of Title 19 in the Downtown Centennial Plan are required for building placement and are supported by staff as the parcels are oddly shaped and the requested waivers are minor in nature. The proposed site will meet all landscaping requirements with the exception of parking lot trees, and this exception is supported as there are additional trees located and planters at the interior of the site. The provided parking exceeds the required parking for the overall site, as well as for the individual parcels. Staff recommends approval of this project as it is in substantial conformance with the Downtown Centennial Plan and Title 19, and it supports the goals of the Downtown Redevelopment Area Plan. If the general plan amendment and/or rezoning are denied, the development cannot proceed as proposed, and a new site development plan review would be required in conformance of the current land use designations and zoning districts. If the general plan amendment and rezoning are approved, but the site development plan review is denied, then a new site development plan review encompassing all or part of the site would be required. Please note, one protest and two letters of support were received for this item's publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Arnold Stock, 2701 Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present the Las Vegas Gateway Center. The subject sites currently contain the following, as illustrated in this map, the Blue Angel Motel, which is a Las Vegas landmark, Vegas Motel, the Paradise Motel, and a vacant site. Las Vegas Gateway Center is a master plan retail-commercial center. The development is located at the gateway entrance to the eastern end of downtown Las Vegas. The City of Las Vegas Downtown Redevelopment Agency has produced several major projects downtown, including the World Market Center, as you know, Premium Outlet Mall, the recent Golden Nugget Expansion, the Lou Ruvo Brain Institute, Symphony Park, the Smith Center for the Performing Arts, the new Las Vegas City Hall complex, and other major development projects that are currently in the planning stages. Las Vegas Gateway Center is a master plan center that will be built on approximately 9.61 acres. The subject site is on both sides of Fremont Street, it is at the easternmost end of the redevelopment project area. We view it as the gateway into downtown Las Vegas from East Fremont, and the opportunities here, we think, are tremendous for a retail development and a real master plan center. The site currently contains a combination of vacant parcels and existing structures that are set to be demolished, thereby creating the building paths for the center complex. The site is located at the major intersection of downtown Las Vegas, commonly known as the Four Corners. This is comprised of Fremont Street, Eastern Avenue, Charleston Boulevard, and Boulder Highway. Daily traffic volumes at the Four Corners are estimated at 80,000 cars plus or minus per day per CB Richard Ellis, making this intersection of arterial streets among the highest traffic volume in southern Nevada. The Las Vegas Gateway Center will contain 90,595 square feet of retail space. The required parking is 391 spaces, we're providing 409. Proposed retail uses, and in the site, as I'm illustrating in the site plan, this is the northwest corner. The site will have, we're proposing a major supermarket, some inline retail shops, and a retail pad at the corner of Fremont and Eastern. The southeast corner will contain retail pads and some fast-food pads to complement the existing Charleston pads that has a Carl's Jr. on the corner of Eastern Boulevard and, Eastern Avenue and Charleston Boulevard. The existing structure is, I'm sorry, the total outdoor patio space and outdoor eatery spaces and plaza space totals approximately 7,100 square feet. This submitted to the City of Las Vegas for the following actions: amend the general plan from MXU to C, the site plan development review, SDR for redevelopment, retail development, and rezone... and rezoning from R4 to C2, the portion of Site B. Wireless tower that's currently located on the lower portion of Site A, which is the southeast corner site, will remain, and the off-premise existing signage that sits on the northeast corner of Fremont and Eastern will be removed, which will currently lie somewhere in about, in there. We held a neighborhood meeting on March 16, 2010, at the East Las Vegas Community Senior Center along with several subsequent meetings, individual meetings that I've held with retail neighbors. I've talked to neighbors immediately behind on the northeast corner quadrant and landowners back here, gone door to door. I've got 22 support letters that I'd like to submit this evening that I didn't have at the time of the application submittal. Also, in my neighborhood meeting, I've had input from neighbors and input from different engineers and planners that we work with. We removed a, we had two driveways along the Eastern Avenue edge, and working with planning staff, we put a collector lane in here to mitigate the potential traffic that could back up here along Eastern Avenue. Also, when I first looked at this site, and we started on this site, by the way, almost a year ago, started working on it, there was a, an existing, there is an existing driveway right here on Fremont Street which we've taken out, and I worked with staff very closely, traffic and planning staff, and have an ingress only driveway here on Eastern Avenue. As I said, I personally met with local business owners and residents that live in the immediate neighborhood and area. In terms of some concerns that we did receive, we have made changes regarding those concerns. Discussions are in process also with the Neon Museum, the, for the following signs, the Blue Angel Motel sign, which is an icon in Las Vegas, the Blue Angel Entry Sign, the Vegas Motel Sign, and the Paradise Motel Sign. And what we envision is, as my clients do, and myself as their consultant, is that this becomes a real gateway into downtown, that it's a welcoming place where people can come and shop, much in the way that Fremont East, the Entertainment District sign sits in front of the, I'm sorry, El Cortez. Also additionally, it's being studied that signs be placed at the Las Vegas Gateway Center project in conjunction with the Ace Green Line stop, which is proposed at this site, and the Ace Green Line will, much like the Gold Line began service on March 28th, the Ace Green Line will have the look and feel, the light rail system, with the flexibility running on regular streets. We think that'll be a tremendous addition for us, much in the way that the Ace Bus stops over at Premium Outlet Mall now, and it's just, it's just really creating that urban excitement that, you know, we like to see in cities. Also, the Las Vegas Gateway Center will be a shovel-ready project. We want to begin by demolishing the motels as our phase one. It will create 50 full-time and 20 part-time construction jobs, approximately 115 full-time and 40 part-time retail jobs in the long run. It will create revenue for the city. Funding for the project is being secured through private construction and permanent takeout financing. Both the owners and myself have negotiated with several different financial institutions and developers who have approached us that are interested in venturing on the project. We'll also have a first-rate management company, property management company managing the stores. If approved by the City of Las Vegas Planning Commission and the City Council, the next step in our process will be to procure tenant leases. We've been marketing the project for about six months now, we've had very, very good responses, and our entitlement, if we do get this approved, will enable us to go ahead and sign the leases that we need for funding. We'll do our civil engineering plans, our architectural design refinement, construction bidding, and commencement of construction. And please note that this development is a long-term investment by the owners of the site, there's no interest in flipping or selling the project. It is anticipated that this development will be a catalyst for redevelopment of the eastern corridor, Fremont Street, and downtown Las Vegas. Thank you for your consideration of this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments or concerns that you may have.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing, anybody here wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlock, 240 North 19th Street. Mr. Stock did an excellent job at the community meeting, and I'd like to thank him for that. I also, I thank the applicant for saving the signs. There's some things that I'd like to point out. If I could see that map one more time. Sure. Yeah. I'm all in favor of this, for this, for several reasons, but to point out, there was some, there were some, some people spoke out at the community meeting about the traffic, but right now, as it stands, there's a huge vacant lot right here, and that vacant lot is currently zoned for an ultimate casino, which, and that's what the sign said out there over a year, they had that sign out there that says, "This property's intended for a casino." Alright, but anyway, what I want to point out is that this would have a lot less traffic than the casino, which I'm all for. What I would like to see is the applicant, if he could, some way of designing the areas so we had some turnout for the buses, on, let's see, it would be on Charleston and on Fremont. The thing that really concerns me is this, time and time again, we had applicants for large complexes that came before the commission and the council, stating that they had to have whatever reason for it, but it always came up to this 17 acres in order to pencil something out. I go, I can, one of them, I know that area that they were going to develop by just south of Boulder Station, but again and again, I remember three different times they came up to this 17 acres, and it was for different projects, and I often wondered why, what is this magic number? Now this applicant comes up with about 9.6 acres, and it really, really worries me that we're going to get this thing built, and there won't be the people to support it, and it'll be boarded up. And there is nothing worse than boarded up properties, nothing. The vacant lot is much better, whatever it takes, anything better than a boarded up property. And right now, to, if you go right to the north of this, those are those sunrise apartments that are absolutely terrible, they were condemned, over 10 years ago, they were condemned. The City Council, Councilman Reese, allowed them to continue if they took the certain proceeds of the rents that they received and put them back in to try to keep these things from falling down. But, as the way I understand it, and I asked Councilman Reese at the council meeting, I says, "Is this currently, does, is this condition on these old apartments still in effect?" And I think he was going to get back to me with that. But if that's so, I really believe that those apartments in some way or form should be incorporated into this, and those things bulldozed down, and that would give us the 17 acres, and everything would be hunky-dory. But it worries me about this 17 acres, and I do not want to see this thing get built and boarded up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Marion, 3455 Cliff Shadows Parkway, 89129. I'm here in two capacities, actually. First, I am the Chairman of the Neon Museum Board, and we are thrilled that with this project, they want to restore the Blue Angel sign, the Las Vegas Motel sign, both of which were designed by Betty Willis, who was the designer of the Welcome to Las Vegas sign, as well as the Moulin Rouge sign. So these are really historic iconic signs, so we're thrilled for that. So from the Neon Museum perspective, we are, we're thrilled to work with them in order to preserve those signs and perhaps relocate them back in a similar site. As a native Las Vagan who grew up in the area, I can remember when Fremont Street from the Railroad Depot all the way down to Eastern Avenue was a tourist corridor, was an entertainment corridor. Some of you might remember the old Blue Onion, and so there was an eastern anchor as well as a western anchor, and that made all of Fremont Street vibrant, active, and economically viable. Right now, the City of Las Vegas is trying to extend the economic viability of Fremont Street down from what is now the current tourist corridor. I think having an anchor like this back on the 25th block, not just the 8th block or the 9th block, is a really strong starting point, and the fact that you've got a private developer willing to invest the funds to do that, and their plan, I think, is successful in how they'll market it, I think that's going to go a long way in order to make all of Fremont Street economically viable again through 15th Street and beyond. So I wholeheartedly support this project, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one close the public hearing, Commissioners comments, questions? Oh. We need to be quicker on that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, give you a minute.
I just drove in from, drove in from California. I own one of the seven-
You gave your name and address.
John Schwartz, and I own a building on Sunrise Avenue, Sevenplex, 2208 Sunrise Avenue. And I'm also on a board where we've got a total of 14 buildings on Sunrise Avenue, together as a collective management association, and we're working for the past number of years to get these buildings in better shape and get good tenants in them and kind of stabilize the neighborhood. Anyway, on the 14 buildings that I'm involved with, we are making progress, and at least on my building, 2208, and on many of the buildings of the 14 in the group, we're all very excited about this development, so I'd like to say that for the record. We think it's great for the neighborhood. We'll work with you wherever, however we could to help advance the development, so that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners? Commissioner Ellsworth?
I just wanted to briefly say for the record that I happened to run into Mr. Stark having coffee with a constituent, and I did get to see the project a few, maybe a few months ago, two months ago, and I grew up at St. Louis and Burnham, and I'm right down in that area, and I'm really excited that someone has the nerve and the foresight, and it excites me that you're going to start at that corner, because what's going to happen is it's going to grow the other way instead of vice versa, and I don't feel like you're gambling on this site, I feel like you are making our city better, and I think it's going to make everything better around it, including those apartments. I congratulate you, I thank your owner, and you will see my full support on this tonight. Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
No, actually, I do have some comments. And it's not to, I am wholeheartedly in favor of development in this area, but I think there's probably some serious questions with regards to the conceptual issues on the site plan, but I wanted to clarify a couple of things with staff, because I, when I went through this, we have an MXU zone now, and R4 zoned. What are the, what's the impetus to go to C2 as opposed to C1? Because I think a very successful retail center can function in a C1 zone. The C2 typically allows us to go to a lot more, you know, tire and brake store. Some of the uses that I tend to think will make this like any other shopping center, that's a concern, so I just wanted to clarify that. Two, I know that, you know, the desire to keep the signs is critical, I think the Blue Angel sign and the entry sign are phenomenal historical landmarks. In fact, long before the mayor moved to town, I drank gin in that parking lot of the-
Not as old as I am now, but-
That's right.
The concern I have is that, we talk about, when you brought up the issue of economic development, we've invested a lot of economic development dollars in this area, and we have a phenomenal amount of vacancy down here. And that isn't because they weren't good projects, it's just the demand and the users haven't proved to be what everybody would, in the blush of a first rollout of a project, we all think is going to be there. From the Woolco box that's, you know, one of the largest indoor swap meets, to the closed Lucky Store, to the old Montgomery Ward store that finally gave way to Lowe's, and they tore down the two grocery store buildings there, to the, and the list goes on and on. And if you're telling me you're here to build a retail center that is going to have a reasonable number of pads, inline shops, and the existing nightclub or tavern use that's there, I don't disagree. What I disagree with is you're showing us a 40,000 square foot box there, and understanding what major retailers require as parking fields and layout, this wouldn't get read with those retailers. And what I, my concern is, we'll wind up with, the best intention is we'll get two pads, two quick service restaurants, which we already have down there, and those aren't the beginning and the end-all-to-be-all to economic development, as much as I like them as clients periodically and such, but it's a very large undertaking, and I think the site plan on the north portion, the triangular piece, doesn't function from a retail perspective. I think the other side of the street is actually pretty decent floor, site plan, except there are dead-end paths that are created by it. You have the L shape, the two buildings that create the L shape at the back of the pad that is the exit to the fast food, and then you've got the entrance to the fast food restaurant with outside dining, which if someone is driving and sitting there ordering their food and letting their motor run, that's not the outside dining location you would want. So those are concerns, but really, the main concern is, on the north side, is the big box, the parking field doesn't fit to where it, in my opinion, would be a successfully marketable space. So I think what we would see here is probably demo of some of this, two or three pads, and then we're going to wait a long time, a very, very long time. And I know that the developers of this property aren't in a position to wait, because they, it was acquired at very favorable dollars and over the years, but over the last 20 years, there really hasn't been a lot of reinvestment in this site. And if they haven't reinvested over the last 20 years, where's my comfort level that if it's the same developer or same owner, they're going to make reasonable investments over the next 20 years? We all want what you're pitching here as far as economic development, but we want it to be a reasonable scenario. Three, four years ago, you'd have been here, if the owners of the property were in the development mood, you'd be asking for high-rise, everything was going to be 50 stories. Then it was apartments, then it was this, now it's, now it's retail pads, and, because retail pads are about the only thing that really are being marketed right now, so if we approve- So if we approve this with the idea that we will get a couple of retail pads and mini-market, then that's an informed decision. So Steph, can you tell me why we're going to the C2 and the, can't we do the same project in the MXU? Or what would the requirements change?
Mr. Chairman, the parcels that comprise that north portion of this site, there are actually four of those, and those will be combined through mapping action at a later date. In order to combine those, they need to be consistently zoned throughout. And the southern three parcels are already C2, so the thought was just to rezone it to conform to the other parcels. That, all four of those parcels are currently general planned as downtown commercial zoning, which would accommodate either C1 or C2 zoning.
But with what's before us, even though I know your recommendation, would it be appropriate if this commission decided to take that north portion and make it C1?
If I may, on the general plan, and again, it is in your background documentation, the GPA is only on the south side, on the western portion of the project that is proposed to change from the mixed-use to commercial, to essentially eliminate some of the restrictions that exist on mixed-use, and to allow the southern portion to all be commercial. I believe, based on your comments, that that is the lesser question. On the northern portion, as Mr. Gebicki indicated, the south three lots of the northern portion, so if you will, the southwest portion, is already C2. The northern portion, where the proposed anchor market and retail buildings, D and E, that is the portion that is proposed to be rezoned from the R4, to which it's adjacent to the north, to commercial. As Mr. Gebicki indicated, since the southern portion was already C2, the notion to create the northern portion as C2 also was what the applicant requested and what staff concurred with. Were the commission to choose to rezone, to the re-zoning action before you this evening to go to C1 instead of C2, that is possible, because there are no buildings there where the zoning line is. The, essentially, the site where the market and the retail buildings, D and E, that portion would then be zoned C1. The southern portion would be C2, and a parking agreement would be required in order to tie the parcels together with regard to the shared parking agreement. We would not be able, though, to rezone the southern portion, because that's not before you this evening. So only this northern portion, D and E, are the zoning action before you this evening.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. With regards to the site plan, with regards to this box user, 40,000-square-foot retailer, what's envisioned to be that?
Well, if I may, I'd like to respond to a couple of things you said.
Sure.
Because I'm trying to process them, and they're all extremely good, very truthful, honest and truthful, all extremely good real estate questions, and especially good questions given the current market. I agree with you wholeheartedly that the retail uses that you cited, you know, some are vacant, especially on Fremont Street, but if you look at Charleston Boulevard and the immediate area here, most of the stores and not all of them are full. And the site itself is on a, on a series of hard corners, and in retail, that's everything. We've had this marketed nationally by CB Richard Ellis. It's been reviewed. The site is in engineering in one of the supermarket chains right now. People like the site because they love the retailers, and the box people love the traffic to it. I see the site as much more than that, because I see the site as the entry into the redevelopment project. And I see that vitality and that urbanness and that city feel to it. We have absolutely no intention, and I understand what you're saying, of having an automotive use in here, nor would the owners want to do that. It's a unique ownership. Many people have been around Vegas a while, remember Mary Barstis. Mary Barstis passed away, I think, a couple of years ago, and her relatives are the executive directors, executive trustees of the estate. They made a commitment of a year of us studying it. They didn't, they didn't push me to market it and get a box and come to the city council and the planning commission and, you know, just get something in there. They want to do it right. And you're quite correct that the investment to this property has not been high over the years, obviously. But they want to, they are the type of people that are, I believe, are necessary visionaries to take that step, to bring in people that are, we brought in a team of architects and planners and engineers. We've spent money on phase-one environmental reports. We've done testing of asbestos in the motels. We're ready to go with the demolition of the motels at the appropriate time. And I believe that this is an urban, it's an urban site with a sort of suburban flair because it's got the parking fields. I agree with a lot of what you said, but what I don't really, what I'd like to ask the commission to consider is that this is a, this is a true redevelopment site. I spent five and a half years in the redevelopment agency in LA and three and a half years in working in the economic development department here in Las Vegas. And when I worked here in Las Vegas in downtown, we could have shot a cannon down, in downtown. We never dreamt that we would have a world market center or a premium outlet mall or a Smith Center for Performing Arts or a Rubo Brain Institute. I mean, they would have laughed at us, you know, and that was 18 years ago, and a lot less gray hair than I have in my head today. But I just think that it takes this type of, unique type of real estate trust to take the time to do the project right. So I also want to talk, really want to talk to the gentlemen with the landowners back here. I walk door to door in many of these on 21st Street. We share concerns of pouring millions of dollars into the site, and we'd like to be involved with the rehabs of those houses as well, so. I hope that addressed some of your concerns.
It does. But let me give you a scenario that I think is potentially a pitfall, and you've worked in redevelopment and you've worked in economic development. This 40,000-square-foot box, let's say you're successful in encouraging a grocer to come from Bonanza and Eastern to this location, just down the block, they can move up to a better corner. That retailer, most grocery stores, will put a poison pill deed restriction on the space they leave, which means the only thing it'll be is the miscellaneous swap meets. We need, in redevelopment, we need to, we don't need what happened in the Vaughn store in West Las Vegas where it's laid dormant for so many years because nobody asked the right questions. Or we've had retail developments that have been supported in the redevelopment area that nobody asked the question, are you going to follow through on your development? I.e., the wonderful Neonopolis, which was done so long ago, no one here was really involved in it. But it all sounds good now, and if I didn't voice my concerns about the site characteristics, I would be, I wouldn't be doing my job as a planning commissioner. And I really believe that your goals are admirable. I don't like the site plan because I don't think it addresses what could be a successful gateway project.
And I completely understand that, but I was involved in the Edmund Center a long time ago. Again, the Edmund Center has no hard corner. It has, it doesn't have the traffic volume to support a major supermarket, and it never has. This, this site does. And we never, and the trust has a lot of land, that I, my client has a lot of land, and we picked this one primarily for the traffic. And there used to be, I believe it was an Albertson's on Charleston, again, closed up mid-block. You can't have a successful, in my opinion, big-box supermarket if you don't have cross-double, a major intersection like this. And here we have three, we have four intersections converging on this, so. And I do respect what you're saying, and I appreciate those comments. But on the C2 issue, it just gives us the flexibility of the uses, and certainly not an automotive use or something wouldn't be compatible with a, with a retail center.
There are a lot of retail centers here in town that have a tire and brake store in there. And I suspect if the big box doesn't work, it could wind up very much like the Kmart at Washington and Rancho that has a massive tire and brake store up against a park and up against-- I'm just, I'm trying to say, are we asking the right questions up front? And if I saw a site plan that really addressed the most, the successful issues that the retailers are going to want, they want their standard store footprint, they want a parking field that is significantly positioned within a radius of their front door, they want circulation and delivery. And this triangular piece doesn't provide that. And you can't turn the box, you know, 90 degrees and get it. It's just, it's not a big enough site. Hence, Mr. Farlow's comment with regard to 17 acres, which is not the magic number, but a reasonable-sized site. You have a major corner here. I don't have a problem with the master plan, I just wanted to clarify that. My issues are the zoning, just so we don't, we've got a lot of auto uses down in this quadrant that are stuck in every nook and cranny, and there's no way to get rid of them or change things, so we can have positive economic development down here. And so why would we buy into a site plan that I think potentially leaves us in the same box? Because, you know, doing one or two pads out front is probably going to be easy for you, but the rest of it's going to be a difficult uphill. And since this isn't, you know, as you put, an economic development, or a redevelopment-type project, those are legitimate concerns from my perspective. But your park, your site meets the parking requirements. I think the circulation on, as I mentioned, on the south corner is challenged and could be made better by reconfiguring Building D, but I don't suspect you're ready to build this at this point anyway. But I think Building D is a problem, and it could be a building built out up against the street and let the parking circulate behind it. That, I think, solves the problem on that site. With regards to the anchor tenant, while you have the right parking counts per code, if everybody's going to come by bus, it might work. But I don't know a grocer, a major grocer, that is going to accept a parking field like that. And my experience is, by the time you get the plans done, fire department doesn't like the straight-in parking on the front of the building. And that usually gets changed, so it, and the retailers don't want their employees parking on the side of the building. That's specific in their documents. So tell me where the beneficial parking is for the customer, when the employees will park out front, no one's going to park on the side. So that I have a problem with, but other than that--
Okay. Thank you.
So--
Excuse me, Chairman, I just wanted to ask you, did I miss something? Is there a proposed garage with tire fixing up--
No, but that's where, the C2 lets us get to that point.
Oh, so you're just thinking it possibly could happen? Okay. I just thought maybe it was happening, and I missed something. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, does it, can we make this a C1 rather than C2?
The northern portion off the northern site, as shown in your documents, so, in other words, that portion, that's D, the anchor market, and E, retail, that lot, the commission this evening could choose to go C1 instead of C2 on that lot.
Okay.
Commissioner Chorby?
This, this project has some of the very legitimate concerns that have been brought up, but also I think we need to restate some of the benefits of it. You know, we've got a couple of odd-shaped parcels here that are in the middle of a redevelopment area that could certainly use some reinvestment and revitalization of the area. You know, the development of this area would be, share your enthusiasm and optimism if you could say it could be the gateway to Fremont Street, but that's an admirable goal, you know, but I do think it provides an appropriate east-end anchor for the development of Fremont Street. I would hope that the 40,000-square-foot box does turn out to be a nice supermarket that can service the people that live in that area. There's always a critical shortage of those types of facilities to give people options and alternate shopping sites. However, I do, well, I'm going to support the project, you know. I share the concerns about going all the way with C2 licensing, or zoning, rather. I think that this project is, has a very admirable concept that I think we need to pursue and support, but at the same time, I see a project that's going to be coming back to us in bits and pieces for modifications that are going to be necessary. And I think by retaining that east-end parcel where Building D and E is as a C1, gives the city a little additional control over the project. Just to go forward at this point and give you an all-the-way-to-C2, the comments that are made about the potential for something other than a supermarket to go in that parcel are higher than I feel comfortable with. And so that's my thoughts on the matter, and we might think of how we're going to articulate a condition or a change to that one item that's requesting that goes all the way to C2 and--
So C1 and C2? Okay.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and I, what I'd like to do is do these one at a time, if everyone's agreeable to that. I'd like to move for approval of item number 18 as it's written.
And that is approved, and that will go on to city council on May 19th.
And then as item number 19, I'd like to make a motion for approval, but changing that from C2 to C1, is that acceptable to the applicant?
I just want to be, if you can, just want to be clear that it's C1 from everything north of the property, the line that separates it from the downtown Centennial Plan. So there are far, there are four portions going to C1?
Yes, that's the one, APN 13935804002.
That would be my motion for approval as to C1 rather than C2.
And that is approved, and that will go on to city council on May 19th. And now we go to item 20?
Yes, and likewise, a move for approval of item number 20. I think as is, we don't need to make any adjustments there for the zoning, is that correct?
The 20 is the SDR.
Oh, sorry, thank you, yes.
So there's no--
No changes, yes. Move for approval number 20.
And there's a motion for approval on item 20, subject to all staff's recommendations. And the stock, while I, like I said, I agree with the project. I'm not here to design this tonight, but I, as opposed to saying, you know, look to have this, the site plan brought back, I'm not going to support it, but, you know, I'd still support your project. Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
And that is approved, and that will go on to--
Restating or--
No, I hit the wrong button. And that will go on to city council on May 19th. I would hope between now and then you would address some of the design concerns, hopefully, because I suspect there will be bigger issues as we go forward. All right?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item 21, GPA 3--
23.
Oh, hold on, we held those two.
23 and 26.
23 through 26 are related-- Twenty, twenty-three through twenty-six are related items. Twenty-three, GPA three-seven-five-nine-nine, applicant Ovation Development, owner Jimmy Lee. From general commercial to SC service commercial along the south side of Lone Mountain Road, approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-eight feet east of Rainbow Boulevard. Item twenty-four, ZON three-seven-six-zero-zero, applicant Ovation Development, owner Lone Mountain Apartments One LLC and Jimmy Lee. From C2 general commercial to C1 limited commercial at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain and Rainbow. Item twenty-five, SUP three-seven-six-zero-one, applicant Ovation Development, owner Lone Mountain Apartments One LLC and Jimmy Lee. For a senior citizen apartment use with waivers to allow apartments on the ground floor where none are permitted, a pri- primary residence or guest entryway in conjunction with commercial use, and a front elevation that does not highlight the differences in uses. Item twenty-six, SDR three-seven-six-zero-two, applicant Ovation Development, owner Lone Mountain Apartment One LLC and Jimmy Lee. For a three-story, thirty-seven-foot, one-hundred-and-fifty-two-unit senior citizen apartment complex.
Mr. Chairman, the site currently consists of two undeveloped lots. Uh, staff notes in regards to the land use here that this is in conformance to policy two-point-two-two of the, uh, twenty-twenty master plan in that senior citizens and assisted living housing be encouraged to develop both to meet the needs of the community residents who wish to age in place in their neighborhoods, and as a means of increasing residential densities in these areas. As such, the staff finds the senior citizens apartment can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing surrounding land uses and with future surrounding land uses. The applicants are requesting this part as a review, waivers of the minimum special use permit requirements for a senior citizen apartment use, and staff support those waivers as they are minor in nature. Uh, staff recommends approval of all, uh, app- related applicant, applications, and please note, we did receive one additional letter of support after publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset, uh, Road here tonight on behalf of the applicant, which is, uh, Ovation Development. Ovation is proposing, if I can turn your head, turn your attention to the overhead, please. Thank you. Ovation Development is proposing to develop an affordable senior housing project, the site plan is on the screen before you now. They have actually, uh, developed an existing apartment complex, um, immediately to the south of the proposed site, and it sits there today, and it's actually very nice, if any of you have been out there and seen it. Uh, they would like to go just to the north and do the affordable senior housing project. They would do an elevation that would be similar to the existing Tivoli Apartment Home Project, which is located just immediately south of that. We do appreciate, uh, staff recommending approval of all of the items, we do agree with all the conditions of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this was advertised as a public hearing, anybody here wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two-forty-third, nineteen, I apologize, my sciences are killing me. On item number twenty-six, could someone explain thirty-seven-foot apartment, is that...
Thirty, thirty-seven-foot height building, that's the building...
Oh, it's a height, thank you very much.
You bet. Anybody else wish to speak on these items? Seeing no one close the public hearing, comments, Commissioner Chorby?
Um, there's no discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. Ready? Okay, I, uh, in light of the dire need for additional affordable housing for seniors, uh, save one for me, I may be submitting an application here before long. But in regards to item number twenty-three, general plan amendment thirty-seven, five-ninety-nine, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Is a motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council on May nineteenth.
In regards to item number twenty-four, zoning thirty-seven, six-hundred, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
In regards to item number twenty-five, special use permit thirty-seven, six-zero-one, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Any comments, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
And in regards to item number twenty-six, site development review thirty-seven, six-zero-two, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
And that is approved, all these items will go on to City Council on May nineteenth. Thank you very much. Easy one. Now we go to, um, item seventeen, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight. GPA three-seven-six-one-four, applicant owner ATQTA LLC and Alexander Tenea LLC. From M medium-density residential to H high-density residential at seventy-one-hundred West Alexander Road. Companion item ZON three-seven-six-one-five, from R3 medium-density residential to R4 high-density residential.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, uh, this is probably gonna present a problem given that this is a general plan amendment, uh, but in abundance of caution, I'm going to have to abstain on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight due to having been involved with litigation against one of the principals, uh, in, uh, of the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, that means I need to make an announcement for the commission.
Yes.
Due to state law, we need two-thirds of the total membership voting to move this forward with the recommendation of approval. This abstention will now make, uh, that impossible, because even if all four voted to approve, we would still fail for lack of a majority, supermajority. So you've got two options, one, obey the item until you have more folks to vote, or two, hear the item with the understanding that even if all four of you vote to approve, that it fails for lack of a supermajority.
And I, I, in this case, I would give the opportunity to the applicant, if you wish to go forward, uh, we can hear the item and, and make action, but it's really, I'll leave it up to you, your call.
Uh, I just assume move forward with the application.
Okay, you do understand, even if we all vote in favor of it, it will still have a, a, no support, or...
And, and what's, what's, what's important to note is that, um, it looks as if, if we've got failing, if we've got a GPA that fails to beat the supermajority, then it looks to me as if the, the zoning then must follow.
Right. So what, whatever action we do on the one will have to coincide with the other, 'cause, so, staff, let's go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the subject, the subject site is comprised of two parcels. The western parcel is developed with a two-hundred-and-twenty-four unit apartment complex, while the eastern parcel is currently undeveloped. The proposed general plan amendment and rezoning would increase the permitted density from twenty-five dwelling units per acre to fifty dwelling units per acre. The requests are appropriate as the subject site provides a buffer between the residential development to the west and US ninety-five to the east. It is also compatible with multifamily residential and commercial developments immediately to the north and to the south across Alexander Road. Therefore, staff recommends approval. If these applications are denied, the site will remain as it is. Note that six protests were received for these items since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Victor Rodriguez, forty-eighty West Desert Inn Road, representing the applicant. Uh, this is an apartment complex that's currently there. Uh, phase one was completed in the mid-nineties. Uh, phase two was not completed due to flooding issues at the time. Uh, the owners are requesting to move forward with phase, a portion of phase two. Uh, after doing some work with NDOT on a drainage study, uh, they feel that they can build a portion of the, the next phase, but they're not prepared to come in with the site development review, 'cause they're still working on, uh, clarification of what can be constructed and further negotiations. The current west half of the property has two-hundred-and-twenty-four units in it and would currently be considered a high-density residential property anyway, so it would be appropriate to go to the high-density. Uh, the west half, they're requesting as its one property, uh, to meet that high-density residential. There, uh, there's no planned additional construction of buildings on the phase one, the west half of the property. We are planning to revise some of the parking, add additional parking in the future, uh, but we're only gonna be able to construct a portion of phase two, which is the east half adjacent to ninety-five. So while we're waiting for, uh, negotiations with NDOT, the owners wanted to move forward with the general plan and the, the zone change. We did have a neighborhood meeting, our one, neighbors that did show up just wanted to make sure that we weren't taking down trees adjacent to their lot. Other than that, uh, I'll open to, for any questions.
Thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing, anybody here wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Commissioner Chorby?
Yes, um, the architectural style of the phase two is to be consistent with phase one?
It is not going to be consistent with phase one. Architectural, uh, style of phase two is going to be a three-story design, the current design are two stories, uh, but they will have the current, uh, architectural styling that's, that's being produced today.
But that will come back before us in a site SDR?
We're gonna be coming back with, uh, an SDR and, and some variances. Uh, we couldn't come forward with it now, only because we don't know how much parking we're gonna lose, if any, uh, with our negotiations with the NDOT and the flooding that, that's happening along the edge. So, that's gonna come back later.
Okay. No further discussions, I'll make a motion then.
Okay.
Okay. Item number twenty-seven, general plan amendment thirty-seven, six-fourteen, uh, support staff's recommendation for approval, uh, subject to all staff conditions.
Is motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that, um, is a four votes, uh, again, the comments of the city attorney?
So, so again, Chairman, if I may, that means that this vote fails for failing to meet a supermajority.
Okay. And we'll go on to, um, City Council on May nineteenth.
And in regards to item number twenty-eight, zoning thirty-seven, six-fifteen, um, recognition of staff's recommendation for approval, I also would recommend approval of the, the item, uh, subject to all staff conditions.
Okay, is motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that does not pass based on the technicality of the supermajority?
Actually, it's a, it's a little, Chairman, if I may, it's a little more, it's a little more complicated than that, only because we don't require a supermajority for the zoning, uh, but, uh, state law says that the GP, the zoning must be consistent with the general plan. This is not the, the body that takes final action, so this may go forward with the alternate denial and approval, uh, and City Council will figure it out on May nineteenth.
Okay, but based on our, our policies of, 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 of vote that doesn't pass or techni- we don't have to vote again, right?
No.
Okay. And the, you understand where we're at and you're, you're fine with our actions and...
I understand.
Okay? Then, uh, May nineteenth?
Thank you.
All righty.
Have a good evening.
You bet. Now we've got item thirty-one and thirty-two related items. Thirty-one, ZON three-seven-six-zero-seven, applicant Volunteers in Medicine of Southern Nevada, owner C and C Asset Management LLC. From RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial, east side of Martin Luther King Boulevard, approximately six feet north of Madison Avenue. And SDR three-seven-six-zero-six, for a proposed one-story, seventeen-foot, twelve-thousand square foot clinic.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the proposed clinic meets Title Nineteen Commercial Development Residential Adjacency and Landscape and Buffer Standards with the rec- uh, with, with a requested exception for thirty-nine landscape buffer trees where forty-five are required. Staff does support the requested exception, uh, as the development provides adequate landscaping and screening mechanisms to diminish the visual impact. Staff notes that the proposed plan also meets two, uh, portions of the West Las Vegas Plan, uh, goals, uh, one being, uh, reducing inconsistencies in land use and zoning within the planned area, as, uh, the rezoning will bring, uh, uh, the zoning into compliance with the general plan on this location. And also to identify vacant and underutilized lands and pursue compatible residential and commercial infill development opportunities, including potential locations for neighborhoods serving commercial development that is within walking distances of residence. As such, staff does recommend approval of both applications. Please note, we have received additional support, letters of support since publication.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Rinaldi, representing the client, the buyer, the applicant.
And your address?
I'm Jaclyn Rinaldi, representing...
You can, you can move it, you can move it.
Hi. Okay, I'm Jaclyn Rinaldi, um, representing the applicant.
Your address?
Seven-eight-nine-three Field Creek Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-one-three.
Thank you. And you've reviewed all of staff's, uh, conditions and her...
Kurt Carlson with SH Architecture, also on the, the same team here. We've reviewed the conditions from staff and we are in agreement with everything on the conditions.
Okay. This was advertised as a public hearing, anybody wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
My name is Jerome Mosley, I live at twelve-oh-one N Street. The proposed property is right in my back door, okay? I'm not exactly sure yet of whether or not I agree with it or disagree with it, primarily because I don't have enough information. I took the time out today to go downtown to get a copy of this particular map, and I noticed, the copy that they gave me, they show that my property is vacated, as, as it shows here. Can I move that here?
You can put it in the center of the, uh, screen, we'll go the overhead.
Yeah, they, they say existing R1, C1, and, uh, they showed that, uh, my, my home is right there. Uh, just to give you a general idea, this is how it sits. Is it there?
That's fine.
Yeah, right. And I'm on the corner of Madison and MLK, I own both pieces of property, my personal home is right behind the personal business there. Uh, my biggest concern at this particular time, as you probably may see in my sketch, uh, which their, uh, plans does not show for the rezoning, is the power easements, because the official at the planning department today told me that all the existing property, and I think it's three different lots that were, is trying to be combined for this property, and there was an alleyway that was left for the power lines, and there, uh, I don't know whether or not we're gonna have access, plus, they're gonna be, when I built, uh, the property at twelve-oh-one N, we had got a variance at the time, displaced the property on the land, and that's been twenty-five years ago. And, uh, my problem is that, quote, the way their block wall is supposed to be sitting there, I'm not gonna have an easement for the power company no more, and they're saying they're staying ten feet away, uh, but if their car decides to come over that, they're gonna end up in my living room, in my dining room. You know, uh, because everything is very, extremely tight at that area, right there. And I'm not sure, is this clinic is supposed to be a twenty-four-hour clinic, or is this a certain time where they say seven to nine, or what? That's what, some of the information I do not have, uh, the whether or not it should go forward. I understand planning's, uh, position, uh, that, you know, a little more unity, and I'm a native of Las Vegas also, and I've seen medical clinics built, uh, from the one on Owens all the way from when they used to use the Cove, and they all end up in something other usage, what have you. So I'm not sure, uh, I have enough facts on, uh, what they're planning there and the security there, because they're gonna be right in my back bedroom.
And just to clarify, your, your house faces N Street at the corner of Madison, right?
My, my house is seventy feet long, it, the entry actually faces, uh, Madison. My garage is on, uh, N Street, my garage is here, my front door is here, and it's just approximately five, seven feet separates our property lines, and all, and which basically, uh, my, I drew where, where the, um, power line, when we put it in, how it came, and what have you, their fences are not gonna be able to go where they're saying it's gonna be able to go, because they'll be on top of my power line. And in the front of my building, we are, at the present time, are, uh, planning on a kiosk to be set there in our parking lot, and that means they're gonna have to either cut up their parking, I think if they beat me to it, I'm gonna have to cut up their parking area to get back to the pole, unless they have made arrangements to put power somewhere closer. We went down about sixty, seventy-five feet and down a hundred feet to get... We went down about sixty, seventy-five feet and down a hundred feet to get to those power poles, and I presume they're going to vacate all of that so that they could get there. Are you following me?
And you're talking about a kiosk?
Well?
Is that something that's approved or?
No, no, that's something we have on our own personal plan.
But?
No, no, it's not approved. It may have to come back before you, don't get me wrong, you know, what have you, but I'm already zone C One Limited.
So you have C One, part of your property is C One and part of your property is R?
My personal residence.
Okay. And it backs up to the parking lot portion of the site plan?
Right.
Okay. And again, are you opposed to this or you, I mean, I understand you're?
What I'm really opposed to is that their block wall is going to, not showing me enough information as they're going to set it ten feet back so that easement is still there, you know, for the power easement, or is it, you know, I don't have enough information. You know, I could ask them, you know, what is this, a twenty-four-hour clinic?
No, no. With regards to that, we'll direct the questions to staff, but Public Works can tell us if they're aware of any, is this an aerial easement that we're concerned with? If it is, then the fence can go underneath it. So it's not going to prevent you?
Oh, no, no. Well, what happened, when I put mine in, they made me dig, you know, they didn't let me go over.
Okay.
They made me dig. You know, I don't know whether or not they're going to remove the power post that's sitting on their first lot, which is really the alleyway, which I guess plan to vacate and give to them, and, or what?
Okay, well, we'll ask Public Works again.
There is an existing above-ground power line series running east to west. This is three lots that they are proposing to combine, and between the southernmost lot and the middle lot, right along that property line, there is a series of power poles. They are above ground currently. I'm not exactly sure how they provide power from there to the gentleman here.
We went underground.
But however they do, that would have to be preserved. There is an existing Nevada Power easement for those facilities, so through the building process, they will have to demonstrate how that is going to remain, and they can't cut it off, but that's the only information I can give you.
All right. Thank you. We'll address this and hopefully it answers all the questions. Anybody else wish to speak on the side and please come forward? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. To the applicant, can you explain this item and then we have some other questions, I'm sure?
We can address that in two parts. His property is the portion right down here on the southeast corner.
The whole thing?
Well, his residence is in this zone right here, which is zoned R one, and I do apologize for the vacant on there. Didn't mean to miss your house there. And the existing C one is adjacent to it. The block wall was put in at staff's request along our property line, which is required between the commercial and residential zoning. We have a landscape buffer in there, again, as required by zoning along that area. For the three, the three lots that are represented in there, yeah, we are starting the process of mapping them, remapping them together into one lot, and we have had very, very preliminary discussions with Nevada Power as to how to resolve the power line easement going through it, one of which is to go underground with the power in that area and be able to service everything. I'm not sure where his power comes off, but there is an easement pretty much in this zone right coming through here, which again, we've started preliminary discussions and we were waiting until it was approved to go any further with discussions with utilities.
So you're okay if there was a condition to have that power line underground?
Yes, because we've had preliminary discussions with them.
I can't talk no more?
We're going to close the public hearing, but?
I was just going to explain where the power line is.
That's fine.
I know exactly where it is.
Okay, thanks.
The, for the second portion of it about how the office would operate for the medical portion of it, Dr. Florence Jamison would be in charge of the office there, and she can address the concerns with how the medical offices operate there.
Florence Jamison, do I say my home address or my office?
Business address, it's fine.
Business address, fifty-two eighty-one Southeastern, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Okay. And can you tell us what is this twenty-four-hour operation? What are you looking at?
I know, we're not planning a twenty-four-hour operation. What the clinic is, the Volunteers in Medicine, Southern Nevada, it is basically a medical home, a family practice office, such as many of you may attend yourself, a general practice, family practice. It will resemble a small group family practice office. It'll just be at any given time approximately the equivalent of having three general practitioners, two dentists running, because it will be medical, dental, and mental health services to service the area here. The hours will be roughly, a question?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. The hours will be roughly nine to five, but it will have some evening hours, which would go probably sort of a split shift, something like six to eight, take a break. It may go continuous, but no, we never really plan to be in there even when everyone's done and cleaning up past nine at night. Will definitely not be twenty-four hours. It is not an urgent care type of situation where, or emergency room, where you just drop in for emergent care. They are going to be regular, like at a regular family practice office, these are people that come in, go through eligibility screening. It is designed to meet the needs of the working uninsured and unemployed in our community. It is not meant to be an urgent care drop-in emergency room facility. So people have to, people will have appointments, and it will be run on an appointment basis. They have to be screened for eligibility. So it's not just twenty-four hours, anyone can just drop in type of a facility.
When you, just, it's, so it's seventeen thousand feet?
No, it's only twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve thousand feet. It seems like a very large clinic. How many employees again?
Well, I haven't actually, we have a volunteer staff, and it includes physicians, nurses, medical assist, it will include some dentists, social workers. I haven't ever actually done the exact numbers for how many employees would be there. I could think about that right now and try to determine that, but haven't actually calculated that. But it would be similar to, let's see, on one, on one time, each physician, if you have two or three physicians, three physicians working, they each have a couple of MAs or nurses, half a dozen there, so there's ten. Then you have a dentist and assist and dental hygienist, it could be another six. You're going to have somebody greeting, you're going to have someone that sign in front desk, probably a couple of people, there's probably twenty. You're going to have eligibility screeners, at least two, so twenty-two. You're going to have social workers. I would say a generous number would be thirty people there, but I really haven't mapped that out, I apologize.
And you, you operate under another clinic similar to this currently?
We currently have the Volunteers in Medicine in Southern Nevada at the Paradise Park Old Recreation Building. We have five thousand square feet, and it services a smaller practice. It's got about, it sees, it will eventually, when it's up to speed, see approximately two general practitioners, each seeing about twenty patients a day, and it has been open since January and running very successfully. Since we opened, we are extremely excited. We have approximately five hundred volunteers that rotate through as physicians, nurses, doctors, dentists, not dentists yet at this one site, but they've signed up, also referral people in the community, so that if some of our clients have other issues, such as dermatology or gastrointestinal, et cetera, cardiologists, physicians who have volunteered for free to help those in our community that are unemployed or uninsured, who are struggling at this time and sick and dying. As you may know, we now have one Nevada a day who dies from lack of access to healthcare.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
I just wanted to ask Dr. Jamison, are you the wonderful OBGYN in town that people, Dr. Jamison, are you the same one?
I am an OBGYN for twenty-five years here in Las Vegas.
And you're that, that one. Thank you.
Were there any other questions?
If there was a, I, the gentleman with the property that joins you brought up some very legitimate concerns, one being the power easement and how that's going to be addressed. If they say that it's going to have to be undergrounded, which seems to be consistent with what they required him to do, you know, they made him go through the additional expense of undergrounding, they're probably going to do the same thing to you. That somehow may impact your parking. Your current rendering shows sixty-one parking spaces, and off the top of your head, you came up with thirty staff members. That leaves pretty tight parking situation if the power company would prohibit you from putting any parking spaces on top of their underground power.
It's a little misleading the way she talks about staff because they are on a volunteer rotating basis whenever they come through there.
Not going to have thirty people there at any given time, staff members?
Yeah, they rotate through it on different shifts, basically, because it's all volunteer services in there, except for a small core group. With the power requirements coming through there, like I said, we've only had preliminary conversations with Nevada Power. We're not sure where the neighbor's supply comes off of that, but obviously, we can't impact his service negatively. If we go underground and that incurs his portion, you know, going underground to service to his property, we would have to do that, and we're aware of that, and that's been budgeted into the perform of the operation.
It's not, it's not the, is the cost as much as it may cause you to sacrifice parking places?
Actually, if we go down, it'll probably help us because we would eliminate poles within the area.
Don't know if they'll allow construction on top of their easement. I don't know.
Yeah, we can park.
The other question I have is in regards to protecting his interests about a, you know, fear of a twenty-four-hour operation, a very legitimate concern. I mean, I wouldn't want it behind my house. Would you be willing to accept a condition of no operations after ten P M?
No problem. I don't think I or any volunteer person wants to be there after ten P M.
Very good. I know, just giving them some slack.
Any other questions?
Cleaning would be okay, just in case our volunteer cleaners would want to come in?
That was why I say not being open. You said you wouldn't have anybody after nine. I gave you an hour.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the cleaning, yeah. Well, even our cleaners do come fairly early now, so I don't think it would be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are any other questions, motion?
Well, I'll make the motion then. In regards to item number thirty-one, zoning thirty-seven six oh seven, make a recommendation for approval, submit all staff conditions.
Is a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved and going to city council on May nineteenth. Companion item?
Okay. In regards to item number thirty-two, site development review thirty-seven six oh six, I'd make a recommendation submit to, for approval, submit all staff conditions with the addition of one more condition, which would be in relationship to the hours of operation, and that would be that the hours of operation not be prior to seven A M or later than ten P M.
Is that five days or seven days?
Seven days. I mean, people get sick on Saturday and Sunday.
Is a motion for approval subject to the amended conditions. If no other comments, please?
Do they agree?
You're in agreement with those conditions?
One hundred percent.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. And that is approved and going to city council on May nineteenth.
Thank you. I would like to get the gentleman's address so that we can keep him apprised of what is going on with the, the power lines and everything.
Yeah, I'm sure he'd be delighted to give it to you. Item thirty-three, V A R three-seven two-seven-six, applicant owner, Shabat of Southern Nevada Inc., to allow a ten-foot rear yard setback where thirty-five feet is required at thirteen twelve Vista Drive and twelve sixty-one Arville Street. Variance three-seven two-seven-seven, to allow twenty-one parking spaces where twenty-five spaces are required. Item thirty-five, SDR three-six oh five, for a proposed one thousand four hundred and forty square foot temporary classroom with a waiver of the perimeter landscaping buffer required to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west perimeter. Item thirty-six, V A R three-seven six-two-seven, to allow two attached institutional signs where one sign is allowed at thirteen twelve Vista Drive. Thirty-seven, SDR three-seven five-seven-nine, for a private school to remove fifteen required trees from the landscape buffer along a portion of the west perimeter.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site contains the existing hubbard and primary school that is under construction. There are three requests by the applicant. The first request is for a site development plan review and two variances for modular building to be used for classrooms. The existing modular building was permitted and installed for use as a construction trailer, but has since been used to provide three classrooms for the existing hubbard on Arville Street until the new school on Vista Drive opens. The new school is projected to open in August of two thousand and ten. Staff cannot support the request as the structure does not meet the minimum rear yard setback requirement, and adequate parking has not been provided for the proposed use. No evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances has been presented pursuant to Title Nineteen eighteen oh seven oh that would substantiate the request of variances. If denied, the structure may only be used as a temporary construction trailer. The second request is for a variance to allow a second attached sign on the front facade of a previously approved private school where only one attached sign is allowed. The school is currently under construction at thirteen twelve Vista Drive. Staff is recommending denial as the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances pursuant to Title Nineteen eighteen oh seven oh that would substantiate the request. The last request is to amend the previously approved site development plan review for the school that is under construction to remove fifteen trees from landscape buffer required along a portion of the west perimeter at thirteen twelve Vista Drive. The applicant wishes to remove the trees only from this, the trees only from this buffer area to facilitate drainage and to prevent any conflict with overhead power lines. Required shrubs would still be planted in conformance with the landscape plan that was previously approved. Staff is recommending denial as the trees will not negatively affect drainage of the site or adjacent sites, and there are trees that could be planted that would not interfere with the power lines. If denied, the site shall be developed in conformance with the approved site development plan review, SDR eighteen three four two. Note that eleven protests and seven letters of support were received for these items since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Rabbi Harlich, twelve sixty-one South Arville, Shabat of Southern Nevada. Notice three separate issues, one as it relates to the modular trailer. When under construction, we removed one of the buildings, we demoed a building in twelve fifty-four Vista, which didn't allow, which made us shorten some classrooms over this school year when we're under construction. That's why we're requesting, we needed extra place for three classrooms for those kids. We're pretty much close to the end of the school year, and our general contractor has told us that they believe they're still on schedule to have the building completed at August sixteenth, so this request is only here for a couple of months until the school year is over, and then we hope that will be, we'll get rid of that, we'll remove it. So those are for those three things. There's also the setback, the reason why we set the trailer where we did set it, is because they had to bring in the utilities, and utilities go, they go behind the building. Really, we couldn't move the trailer further east because it wouldn't have given us the ability to put in all the utilities. As, as far as the signs, the sign is, you have over here? the sign is, you have over here the picture. I have with me here Brandon Scott from Vision Sign. There's, the reason we're requesting two signs, one of them is going on the entryway, which is, one of them is on the entryway, which is the name of the school, which is the Desert Torah Academy. And the other one will go along the building, which is the major contributor who gave us a lot of the money, the funds to build this building. We felt he deserves to have his name up there, which will be called his, the educational campus. That's the request. So one goes on the canopy and the entryway, one goes along the building. As far as the trees are concerned, we understood that there is some issues with the drainers and also the power lines. The power lines sit right on top of that. I don't know what trees we could get there. We wanted to alter, conform all the trees that we're putting on our property. And also the west side, really, on the other side is the backyard of another commercial building that's nothing really there. So the only one that will affect removing those trees is us and we prefer not to have it over there. It's a playground. The ball's going into those trees over there. So that was our request besides the power lines as well as we were told is an issue. There may be an issue with an easement in Nevada Power because it runs right along, that's what I was told, but I'm not sure if, if there is an easement there that's not even ours to plant.
And the parking issue?
The parking issue is again, back to the trailer. It all has to do with, it all has to do with the trailer that we put in that we shortened some parking spaces, but that is all going, going to go away. Once our temporary classroom goes away, we're moving into the building. We have ample parking both on the Vista side and the Arville side because there's a building that they're taking away. So it's all for the next couple of months. And the truth is, we have, we made a deal with our neighbor that he lets us use 11 of his parking spaces, but couldn't get it. He would have to go get a new site development, which he didn't want to bother through, but we use my neighbor's parking lot where all our overflow parking parks.
Okay. This was advertised to public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on site, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. As our dear former Commissioner Quinn said, there's nothing so permanent as a temporary structure. But I have a, I, I am really encouraged that I think that this might be temporary. Thank you.
Thank you.
18 Clark, on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, as before, when this was, when this came before council, before planning, before council, we spoke for this, to have an inner-city school of this caliber, thank you, is, is, is very exciting. And what a way to keep an inner city alive and dynamic and a place where, where children are being taught in such high caliber ways. But we are, we are definitely for what, and we, and we, we know that these people are doing things, it's also, it's also a challenge to go inner city and to go out and find a big piece of property somewhere and build on it is fine, but then it does not serve the inner city the way we, we need it served. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on site, please come forward.
Hi, Liz McGrath, 1413 Vista Drive. We own the property. We don't live there now. Do I give my home address or is that okay?
Whatever address you prefer to give.
Okay. I want to commend the rabbi and the project on getting the project going and moving along at a great pace. He has hired a contractor who has been very responsive to any issues we have and we are directly across the street from the project and they've, he's been very good at communicating with me and responding to me, the gentleman who's in charge of the project. I'm against each of the items that were listed. We, we spent many hours in many hard-fought battles to get these concessions and it's almost to the letter, all the things that they agreed to not ask for waivers or variances on. And now it seems we're back here again and I hope that they are just, you know, I mean, if it were approved, I would hope that they are just very temporary. There are some, I just want to verify some things that were on the January 9, 2008 City Council meeting staff report. And there were some irregularities in the addition of the parking spaces and of the address that was listed. 1253 Arville and 1261 Arville, I'm, I would like to ask the rabbi, are those the same parcel? When you go on the Clark County Open webpage, no matter which one you type in, you get the 1253 site map that comes up. Okay. And so also, there, I, I didn't see the need for the parking variance because there were supposedly going to be 55 parking spaces available on the Arville property anyhow. That was one of the conditions from the staff. I don't know if I lay this up here if you need to see it or need to know the page number.
They do have a list of the historic approvals.
Okay. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, for a school of this enormity set into a residential neighborhood, I think the more trees and the more parking spaces on site, the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? If you do, please come down.
How you doing? My name's Scotty Ray. I live at 4191 Del Ray, which is directly at the end of the street of Vista. My issues really are with the signing and stuff like that, but when they did build the building, they took all the substantial dirt from the front of there and put it right across the street in front of my house in a berm. And there's piles of dirt piled up right straight across. They own that lot, I guess, also. They own quite a bit, right? And that's not very much good looking from the front of my doors to see a big wall of dirt and piles. That's where they're using all the construction. Vehicles are parked there and everything too. But one other thing is, they brought the sewer down, cross, and right and directly in front of my driveway is a manhole. And they run it down in front of the next house right next to me. So I didn't realize the sewer had to come this way and not up the Charleston, which I live with because they buried it. And I guess there's no, I hope there's no backup because it'll stink in front of my house. But they haven't finished patched it back. Soon as I saw the contractors putting it in there, they put coal mix in there and that's the way it sits. It's not completed. There's actually a bunch of trenches across the street going down where they put in the other easements and stuff that haven't been completed either. So initially, I'm just as scared of the dirt blowing. My hands, my house is, I mean, my parents homesteaded that land. And I mean, I'm not afraid of the school being built because they are pretty quiet, but they need to finish up the process and they're going to have to remove that dirt because it's just piled up on their land. It's going to blow into my pool and all the thing I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name, sir?
Scott Rig.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thomas J. McGrath, 1413 Vista Drive. My wife and I own the property just directly across the street from the Desert Torah Academy. Commissioner Quinn, I just need to remind you that I spoke with Councilwoman Tarkanian this evening. And all of these items that we had pressed for, for concessions from the rabbi, now they want to go back on. And, and I, I don't think, I don't feel that's right. We asked for landscaping buffers. One of our primary concerns is the traffic flow in the parking spaces and we had all this negotiated prior. And for them to come back at this time is just not right. It's not only, it's not only wrong, but it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a few moments to respond, Rabbi.
Apparently, they didn't hear a word that I said. This parking has nothing to do with our permanent structure. This parking has to do for the next two months of our construction. I didn't go back on any of our requests. We're not asking, asking for a variance if they would read the request over there. There's a variance that's tied to the trailer. When the trailer goes away, we go back to all our parking. So we didn't go back on anything that we said. Talking about the, the trees. The trees is, no one sees the trees but us. It's on the west side, forgetting that where Mr. McGrath lives is on the east side. He can't even see the west side. The east side, north side, and south side is, is remaining. So to get up there and to say that I went back and that it's unfair, it is unfair for him to make such a statement publicly that we've changed our word because every, these conditions tie into our temporary trailer, which we need just to function for this year. They see the progress is moving along. So it's there. What else could I do?
Okay. Can you address the dirt very quickly?
The dirt, they, they parked it over there. I'm not sure where on Del Ray is, which is the property. I know one of the things is the neighbor that's on the east side always uses my property to go back and forth to cut across it. And the general contractor suggested, let's build a little berm so people can not cut through my property and also not have kids go up on the bike and that. It is kind of high now, but we are going to remove it. But we were planning to leave some type of berm over there just to protect our property and people shouldn't go on there. But if it's something that's a big issue, we could, I could address it.
It's a pretty significant construction, a pretty site.
Yes, now it is. They are going to remove it. They're actually grading now in front of the building, back of the building. They're not sure how much dirt they need, not what type, but they are planning to remove most of it.
Okay.
And I, about the sewer and that, I know I, no, I don't know honestly. I could have had the general contractor. I'm not sure what the status is.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes. I spent an hour with Rabbi Harlig today. And if you don't go to the site and visually walk it with him, it's very hard to understand what's going on here. And so first I want to address what bothered me the most, and I told you the minute I met you, was the trees. And when you showed me the trees, the trees are behind a west wall of your property. And then there's a vacant little lot and then the building faces Arville. So the only people that see the, these big huge trees that are going into the power poles would be your children playing in the playground. They're not, there's not, they, there's no reason for there to be trees on that west perimeter because it does not, it's not seen from anywhere but from the playground. I saw it with my own two eyes and I would have never said, don't put a tree in because Steve Evans would, you know, kill me. But they don't belong there. And I saw it with my own two eyes. That's number one. The second thing I asked him was what my dear friend, Mr. Farlow, said, was about my husband who believes that once you put in a temporary building, it never goes away. Miss Rabbi, sir, I wanted to call you Reverend Rabbi, assured me that that is going to be gone in three months when the construction is finished. And for some reason, I feel like Mr. Farlow, I believe you. So I was going to put, I mean, at your, you agreed, a six-month review that that trailer thing is gone and the parking is in place and it's, you're, you're going to keep your word. The other thing we talked about was the
Sinage.
The signage. So when you hear the word signage, you think of these big billboards or these big things hanging over these lovely neighbors' homes. And then when you show me the signage and you have a wonderful man that, that participated in building this for you, his name belongs on your building. It's a gift to him back from you. The other thing I want to say, and I want to agree, agree with this nice lady, I have never left a project since I've sat on this board so excited about something being built. And like I said to you, it has nothing to do with my faith or your faith. What it has to do with you building a fabulous facility to educate our children in our community within your faith. And all of these things in here are going on now. There's no doubt about it. But they're going to be all done and all gone away when your property is complete. And I am going to be happy to support every one of them after my commissioner's speak. Thank you for the nice afternoon.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have one concern that could be resolved just by, by, by a commitment. And that is that the dirt on the lot across from the gentleman's house, that when this project is completed, that dirt would be removed and the area that's now been, would have then been cleared, have some kind of soil stabilization on it so as to avoid the blowing dust that's going to negatively affect everyone in the neighborhood and including your space. So just take care of the dirt pile.
Yes.
Thank you. It's good enough for me.
One more question, please. I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn.
Are you going to have a, the lights for the cars to slow down, the 15 mile an hour zone on Vista or on, is that required for the school? This is a big school. He has 150 students there now. He's hoping to have 250. I know he's going to have 250 or more. So
Can't have more. My neighbor's going to have 250 was our agreement.
Okay, 250's it, but
I'll be up there soon again.
It's just, I'm just wondering about, do I ask Public Works that about, because it is a school and kids will be walking to that school. And on Sunday, they walk, it wouldn't have to be on Sunday, but will there be a school zone on Arville or on Vista for the children walking to the school or to slow the cars down mainly on Arville? That's what I thought of Rabbi after I left you today.
I can just say one thing. The kids are all going to be coming Vista. They're not, Arville is not, is only going to be for the synagogue. The school is all
Okay, so they're just becoming on Vista?
Yeah.
So what is your opinion on that? Do you think they need a school zone there?
Typically, the school zones would be required on the larger streets such as Arville.
Okay.
The flashers, I should say.
Okay.
There will be a school zone, most likely, on Vista. Flashers, the traffic department is, is currently looking at that as to whether they'd be necessary.
Meaning like a sign, like 15 mile an hour sign or something? That would be great.
Right. Typically, the flashers are not needed on the smaller streets, but each one is evaluated independently and we're currently evaluating that. But there would be a school zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Rabbi, I had a couple of questions maybe for your sign. One of the drawings that showed, showed the Desert Torah Academy, the other one showed the Robert Cohen Educational Campus. But one of the overheads we just had before us showed another sign on the other, on the north end of the building. So I, I guess.
No, Brandon Scott, Vision Sign, 6630 Royal Spring Street. I apologize. I grabbed the wrong plans. I took over this project for somebody else and I just grabbed what was in the file, the most up-to-date one that I thought I had. And actually, you are correct. The Robert Cohen Educational Campus is to be over here on this portion of the building.
The south, the south side.
So that drawing that you show, a sign on the north edge of the building, that sign is not part of what's before us? We're not going to wind up with two signs on there?
No, sir. It, it has been moved to the south building, the south end of the building. Like I said, we just, I just brought the plans before they were revised. So I grabbed what was in the file, thinking I had the right thing. It is the exact same sign. We just shifted panels.
Okay. I, I just wanted to clarify so we didn't wind up with something else. And the Desert Torah is a lit sign and the Robert Cohen is a non-lit?
Non-lit.
Okay. All right. I personally wish you could find a place for more trees because I think making the campus in this urban fabric that we're, was brought up with regards to the in, inner city, I think it's important to have the trees. I think it's important to create that living environment for, for the, the students, but
If I'm not mistaken, excuse me, I think they moved it from the west side to the south side. They added trees. I'm pretty sure that's what they did, the architect, because we already were, I'm pretty sure that it was that.
Okay. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, that's, there's no indication that those trees are to be relocated, just removed.
Okay. And that's, that's really my concern. It's just, if they're relocated, I think everybody walks away with some of the original commitments that, that were, I think everybody felt. And then with regards to the temporary building, and, and I, and I believe you wholeheartedly that you want it out of there so you can function the school and, and you need it. When the building is complete, the, the school building is complete, which is a phenomenal building, I was by there today at length. But would you be willing to commit to, to a modification of commitment that says that that modular building would be removed prior to the issuance of the C of O? More like she couldn't open up classes in the, the main campus without that building being gone? I mean, I think that's a, it's a within a week of each other, probably.
I'm just, yeah, but I'm just worried about, give me 30 days from after the issuing of the C of O that that's
Is that an enforceable issue from staff?
Simply, I gotta get, you know, I gotta make sure.
Oh, no, I, I, I believe your commitments. I'm just trying to make sure we do the right thing here.
I mean, my contract is up. I want to make sure that they really are open in time.
I, I actually.
And then if I tell them, you're not going to give it to me because the trailer's still there. Give me 30 days after I get certificate documents.
And staff can work with that. That's, that's agreeable to staff, 30 days after issuance of, of, occupancy that the temporary trailer being moved.
I think, I think that reinforces the commitment that you made with the neighbors. And I, and I understand that you're not changing where you're at. It's just the perception that, that things are.
And if you see the beautiful building, why would I want to keep a trailer there?
It's a phenomenal building. It's, it's much more impressive and, and the stature is probably a little more than was anticipated in the rural residential area. But I, I think the school's a great place and I will support it with those corrections.
Thank you. I, I'd like to make the motion on this one because I'm excited to have you in the neighborhood. Starting with variance number 372-
Starting with variance number 37276, following all staff's recommendations.
Public hearing's closed.
I'm going to, now this is the one about the setback. Okay, so this one, I'm going to make the motion for approval of variance 37276.
And staff, I'd like to propose the correction to delete condition number two.
Deleting condition number two.
If there are no other comments or questions, please cast your vote. That is approved. We'll go on to City Council on May 19th. Item 34?
Item 34 is variance number 37277, and that's to get rid of a few of the parking spaces. That'll be back. So with that, I recommend approval at this time.
Can we clarify that? Because I think what the rabbi made the agreement is that variance is only because the classroom is there, right?
Right. The, no, because the trailer is there.
That is correct. Yes, the variance is for the temporary classroom.
So when that building goes away, this variance will extinguish it? It won't?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, it'll be gone.
Here's a motion for approval.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. We'll go on to City Council on May 19th. Item 35?
Item 35 is the one about the trees, and that's SDR 360... Oh, I'm sorry. Item 35 is SDR 36050. And I'm going to make a motion for approval on that, following staff's recommendations.
Some proposed conditions of approval changes to delete number two, to change number four to indicate that the approval shall be reviewed in six months, and to add a condition that no more than 30 days after the issuance of C of O on any permanent building, the temporary building shall be removed from the site.
And we talked about the six-month review, and you said that was fine today. So adding those two conditions...
If I may, the two requirements seem inconsistent. If he's got the building out of there 30 days after, the six-month review would be unnecessary.
It's up to the commission, of course, but the question is with regard to the timing of the construction and the status of the project and all of that.
And the review could be administrative anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be an administrative review in six months with the approval of SDR 36050.
And there's a motion for approval with the amended conditions. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. We'll go on to City Council on May 19th. Item 36?
Item number 36 are the signs, and we realize that the ones you brought today weren't what we're going to see on the walls. So I'm going to make a motion for approval of variance 37627 with the signs that we discussed here tonight, Rabbi.
It's pursuant to the signs planned submitted. Not what they brought this evening, what is in your package, what is submitted to staff.
Thank you.
There's a motion for approval with the conditions. Please cast your vote. And that is approved. We'll go on to City Council on May 19th.
We're on to number SDR 37579, which are the trees. And I do agree with Chairman Truesdale that as many trees as you can get on that property. And we talked about that. You said that you were going to put trees on the north and the south perimeters, but the west we were eliminating because no one would see them. So I'm going to add a condition that there will be trees on the north and the south perimeter. And so it'll look nice. You'll like it once they grow.
If I may, the north and south are already required and already part of the approved site plan. What has been done in other cases for the Planning Commission's consideration is to require that these 15 trees be located elsewhere on the site, subject to the approval of the Planning Development Staff.
And was that the west side?
It would be elsewhere on the site.
Location to be submitted by the applicant.
Okay.
You're in agreement with that, Rabbi?
So you're in agreement with that, sir? Thank you. Then we'll...
So that would be an added condition.
So with that added condition, I'm going to make an approval for SDR 37579.
And motion approval with the amended conditions. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City. Oh, okay.
Jewish holiday on the 19th.
Yeah, the rabbi indicated that he has a religious holiday on the 19th, and was wondering if he could possibly have his items referred to the next City Council meeting in June.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
So we can, all of those items can go together to June 2nd? Okay, and there's a motion for, we've approved everything?
Just one more vote.
Motion for item 37. No other comments? Cast your vote. Or do we, we voted?
I voted.
Okay, you got it. We're good. Thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a short break. Thank you.
Well, it's, it is a smart. I think one day. Very unusual to prove. Huh? There's, there's another. All right. Yeah. Have fun. Well. 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 Okay, well, take care of that. And then I'll talk to you later. Huh? Well. Actually. Yeah. Well, a lot of people don't even, yeah, they're not sure what's in there. Especially. Oh, my God, I got that first. Really? I got my. I got my. Chemist's fix. And it was. And that thing is, it's got more than twice that, but she thinks. In practice. I just said, stop needing, needing more than. Yeah. Strong, Peter. You should still come in once a month, every other month. Every other month. I saw. I got that. I got my. I got my. Chemist's fix. And it was. And that thing is, it's got more than twice that, but she thinks. In practice. I just said, stop needing, needing more than. Yeah. Strong, Peter. You should still come in once a month, every other month. Every other month. I saw. I got that. I got my. 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 I just said, stop needing, needing more than. Yeah. Strong, Peter. You should still come in once a month, every other month. Every other month. I saw. I got that. I got my. 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 Strong, Peter. You should still come in once a month, every other month. Every other month. I saw. I got that. I got my. 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 Yeah. Yeah. I get a little too. Check the. Minutes and stuff to see if they pass or not. Well, yeah, sometimes they do, but I follow down to the city. I'll come to the city. You know, I'm. I understand. So, I'm. 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 Woo! Brian. But that's. I'm using. So. He does cars and signs. The bubble cars and the store cars. I think I, I think. Last year. They want. Oh. Speaking. That was called, I think it's. Um, I thought he had the. Union. Yeah. 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 Speaking. That was called, I think it's. Um, I thought he had the. Union. Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. Yeah. He does cars and signs. The bubble cars and the store cars. I think I, I think. Last year. They want. Yeah. 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 Last year. They want. Oh. Speaking. That was called, I think it's. Um, I thought he had the. Union. Yeah. 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 This is just the classification. Oh. The classification. Yeah. The secret is that it's in the other cities. And Jeff and Karen. Secretary. So, let's call you. I was wondering, did you have a big situation? It's during, maybe all time. So, that's. Just don't worry. It's in our kids or other cities. It's classified. So, that's. They might. They're asking. But the OS is. That's all. It's important. So, that's. So, that's. It's. In our kids or other cities. It's classified. So, that's. They might. They're asking. But the OS is. That's all. It's important. So, that's. So, that's. Some places. Some places. It's. 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 I don't mean that. That's why they used to be short of me doing that. I'm sorry. We're gonna go ahead and start in a minute.
We're now at item thirty-eight, VAR three seven five nine two, applicant owner Bert and Kathy Short to allow a proposed one thousand five hundred and six square foot accessory structure, class one, for a total of two thousand one hundred and thirty-six square feet of combined floor area within where seven hundred and twelve square feet is the maximum allowed at six two four one Whispering Sands Drive accompanying SUP three seven five nine three for a proposed one thousand five hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure, class one.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. The lot consists of an existing one thousand four hundred and twenty square foot, uh, single-family residence with a five hundred and seventy six square foot accessory structure. Uh, staff recommends denial of this variance and the special use permit as, uh, the site is being overbuilt as indicated by the variance itself. If the variance requested is denied, the associated special use permit must also be denied and the property will remain as it is. Please note that we did receive, uh, an additional support, uh, the, prior to publication.
Good evening.
Evening. Um, name is Bert Short, sixty-two forty-one Whispering Sands Drive, uh, Las Vegas, eight nine one three one. And, uh, um, we feel as though we have plenty of room to build this, uh, structure. It's a casita. Um, it's an irregularly shaped lot which is not obstructing anybody's view, maximum height of about sixteen feet to the top of the roof. Um, we're, uh, minimum, uh, to the property line is fifteen feet. In most cases, it's even further than that. Um, we have, um, uh, four letters from our closest neighbors and, you know, giving us, uh, their okay and blessing to do this. Um, and I don't see, you know, if there's anything that we can do to, uh, get this built, I sure would like to do this.
Okay. This was advertised as public hearing and we wish to speak on the side and please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farland, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Uh, are rentals allowed in RE? Because if, if this could ever be allowed to be a rental, I would, I'd be against it. Or if the applicant would, 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 uh, declare now that it wouldn't be a rental, you know, I could, I could understand that too, but I don't think they need rentals out there.
I think I've already stated that, that this was not going to be a rental and I would, you know, agree to that and under any circumstances.
Okay. Uh, anybody else wish to speak on the side and please come forward, seeing no enclosed public hearing. Uh, commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I might. Um, on, uh, the, the rental issue, you agreed, uh, we could place it as a condition, you will not rent this center in any circumstances?
Very, very much so, one hundred percent.
Director Wheeler, we can make that as a condition?
On the SUP.
Yes, number thirty-nine. All right, well, unless there's any other questions, I'll move for approval of item.
One, I did have one question. You, you're submitting this as an accessory structure, but candidly, it's a full house.
Uh, yes.
And what, I guess, what is the, I'm trying to understand the purpose of this for?
Um, actually, uh, the main house, we're, we're putting our daughter, son-in-law and grandchildren in that and building the smaller structure for my wife and I to live in, in the back.
That's, that answers my question, thank you.
I'm gonna try to keep the family together.
Okay. Um, I know staff's, uh, recommended denial. I think the, the rental issue will answer some of it, but, uh, commissioners, any other comments?
If they're on, I'll move for approval, item number thirty-eight, variance three seven five nine two.
Okay. There is a motion for approval. If there are no other questions, please cast your vote. And item thirty-eight is approved. Item thirty-nine?
Uh, move for approval, item number thirty-nine with the added condition that there'll be no rental, uh, of the, of any of the structures, it'll be for family use only.
Family use only, yes.
Same families.
If, if I may, the, this accessory structure shall not be separately rented at any time.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Then the motion is for approval with the amended conditions, please cast your vote. And that is approved and that will go on to City Council on May nineteenth.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Now, we go to item forty, SUP three seven five seven six, applicant Cash America Super Pond, owner Fremont West LLC, for a pond shop with waivers to allow one hundred and fifty-four foot distance separation from a residentially zoned property and a two hundred and fifty foot distance separation from a financial institution specified where two hundred feet and one thousand feet respectively are required at three oh seven South Decatur Boulevard. Companion item is SUP three seven five eight oh, applicant. Sorry, no companion item. Your honor.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use will, uh, will re-tender to six thousand square foot, uh, building. Uh, staff is recommending the, denial of the application as the proposal cannot be conducted in a, uh, compatible and harmonious manner, uh, as evidenced by the requested waivers of distance separation requirements. If denied, the use will not be permitted at this location. Please note, we received additional protests and letters of support after publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Uh, before I start, I'd like to introduce a couple of people who are in the audience with me, just in case, uh, you have any questions that I won't be able to answer. First is Caroline Seoka. She is the Director of Community Relations for Super Pond. Uh, Barry Becker is actually the owner of the land on which we are proposing this particular Super Pond and someone who probably doesn't need an introduction, but Chris Kemfer, um, my partner and colleague is also in the audience if I can't answer any questions and I certainly hope I can answer so, all these questions, otherwise he'll be mad at me. A little bit of background on Super Pond, I think that this commission is aware of Super Pond. Super Pond has been in this valley for over twenty years. They, uh, we think their first store opened in approximately nineteen eighty-nine. For over twenty years, they, we think their first store opened in approximately nineteen eighty-nine. Since that time, they are and have proved themselves to be a respected and leader in the industry. The reason I give you a little bit of background just about SuperPon is to lead into my next point, which is about pawn licenses just in general. Pawn licenses, based upon the city code, can only be issued based upon an increase in population. And unless and until there is an increase in population, no additional pawn shop licenses can be issued. The item that is before you tonight is not a new pawn shop license that has been issued by the city of Las Vegas. It's actually a relocation of an existing pawn license that had been in place for a number of years on, right near Fremont Street Experience, where the current Rush Tower, which is the expansion of the Golden Nugget project, sits today. If you will recall, there was a SuperPon location there for a number of years. But in working with the Golden Nugget and the beautiful project that they've built, they moved out of the way so that Rush Tower could be built. And since that time, SuperPon has been looking for a location where they could relocate that license to. The location that we have before you tonight, if I can turn your attention to the overhead, please? Thank you. It is right on Decatur, just south of Meadows Lane. It's hard to tell, but it is in this red area outlined in pink. The red area represents the C2 zoning. The pink area just north of Meadows represents C1 zoning. And the yellow area represents the residential that is surrounded, or excuse me, that is immediately to the east of us. I point out the zoning map just in order to show you the amount of commercial that surrounds us. We're definitely within a commercial corridor, and I think that that's an important point. Just to point out a couple of the things that are immediately around us in terms of existing uses. This is a former Sizzler location. It's been vacant for approximately fifteen months. Sizzler has not been in there since that time. Immediately to the north of us is a Wendy's. Just to the south of us is an Arby's. Farther south of us, there's a Walgreens, McDonald's, some other commercial uses. Then as you go north across Meadows, this is the former Mervyn's location, but then of course you've got all of Meadows Mall. And on this corner of Meadows and Decatur, you have the existing Target Center, which is open today, plus additional commercial uses. And immediately west of Decatur, in this C2 area, is an existing commercial shopping center. At one point, it did have a grocery store in it. Unfortunately, that grocery store has closed, but it does still have some operating and open commercial businesses in there at this time. Thank you. The drawing that I'm showing you now shows what the existing Sizzler site looks like today. I should say former Sizzler site. This is a picture of what it looks like. You can see Wendy's here, and you can see the Arby's sits to the other side. Just above that is what SuperPon proposes to build with this application, should it be approved. It's in a $600,000 investment to make changes both to the exterior and to the interior of the site. With this new SuperPon location, it would employ approximately ten to fifteen new employees with full benefits, which I think is an important point as well. We do have, we did file for a site plan review at the same time. It has been reviewed, or it is being reviewed administratively. We wanted that to be part of this application so that you could actually see what the building was going to look like, and we could agree to any conditions, as I will get into in a little bit, as it relates to the site itself, to make sure that the building that we are showing you tonight is the building, in fact, that we want to build. With this application, as staff read into the record, I do have to request two waivers. This aerial, in outlined in pink, is where our site is located. The two waiver requests that we have, thank you, is a 200-foot code requirement from our parcel to the residential. The residential is located to the east of us. Code requires us to be 200 feet. We're actually 154 feet. Now, that's as measured from the pink line to the residential. If you actually measured from the distance of the building itself, we exceed that code requirement, and we are 300 feet away. In between the proposed location and the residential, you have a parking lot, a block wall, and then a street before you actually get to the residential. The other waiver that we have is a waiver to, we are required to be 1,000 feet away from any other existing pawn shop, as well as any other financial institution specified. There are no other existing pawn shops within 1,000 feet of us. However, there is an existing, it's a Cash Express, that's located right across the street on Mayflower. And again, we have to measure from our property line to that property line. So that's approximately 250 feet where 1,000 feet is required. However, the actual distance, again, if you were to measure from building to building, is over 800 feet. So from a reality standpoint, we do get closer to the distance waivers, the code requirements that we're asking for today. However, with the property line measurement, that's what requires us to ask for the waivers. Now, before we ever filed this application, we spent some time in this neighborhood. This neighborhood, of course, has a lot of folks who have made this their home for a number of years and care very deeply and very passionately about what goes on in this neighborhood. So we didn't just file the application and then have neighborhood meetings. Before we ever filed any applications, specifically Caroline Seoka and Barry Becker, who would be the two most knowledgeable people, Caroline on behalf of SuperPon and Barry on behalf of the property owner, went to the neighbors. In specific, we went to the Meadows Neighborhood Preservation. We made a presentation to their board meeting on February 2nd. On February 9th, we appeared before the Charleston Heights Preservation Board Meeting. And then on February 18th, we presented this proposed location at the Meadows Neighborhood Association Meeting. They had just a general neighborhood association meeting. There were approximately thirty people in attendance. Although we were not specifically noticed to make a presentation on that agenda, we did come in, make a presentation, and answer any questions that were asked. Subsequent to that, we filed the application and then held a voluntary neighborhood meeting on April 8th. We noticed to the same radius that would be noticed tonight for this application. And at that neighborhood meeting, there were approximately five neighbors in attendance. In addition, then you also had staff, and of course us. And none of the neighbors who were present spoke in opposition of this project. So that brings me to additional letters of support that we have worked on, in addition to reaching out to the associations that I've just mentioned, and I'll turn these in to the record once I read them in. The first is our immediate business neighbor, as you can see on this, as you can see, thank you, on this board, is Arby's. We do have a letter of support from our immediate business neighbor, which is Arby's. Our other immediate business neighbor is Wendy's. We also have a letter of support from Wendy's. And again, as I pointed out, we went to the Meadows Neighborhood Preservation Association before we ever filed anything. We also have a letter of support from that association. And then additionally, we have three letters of support just from neighbors that are in the general area. Now, these neighbors might be outside the notification radius, but they were neighbors who actually attended the Meadows Neighborhood Preservation Association and subsequently provided letters for us. And just to read their names, one is from Greg Nafsker. A second letter is from Scott Nafsker, and a third letter is from Manette Cortez. So I'd like to hand these letters in for the record. Thank you. And just a final, a couple of final points, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Sometimes we are asked whether or not a pawn shop can be a compatible neighbor, first of all, in a, in a commercial neighborhood, let alone being compatible to the residential neighborhoods that are usually surrounding commercial neighborhoods. So what we did is we went around town, and I have three examples for you. I think that they're important examples to point out, especially in light of the recent bonds or the closing of the grocery store across the street, and the hope by the community in the immediate area that a grocery store will come back into this area. This particular SuperPon is located in the city of Las Vegas on Elkhorn and Durango. You can see a picture of it right here. But in the distance, I hope it comes out on your overhead, across the street is a Smiths. That, our way of showing that certainly SuperPon and grocery stores are compatible with each other. There is a very successful commercial shopping center immediately across the street from us, which has banks, restaurants, and a grocery store. The next one I wanted to point out to you is, again, in the city of Las Vegas, and it's Buffalo and Washington. This, you can see the SuperPon building right here, but perhaps easiest to see is what's in the center with us or across the street. We are in the same commercial center as a Trader Joe's, and across the street, you can see a Lowe's. There's obviously other commercial uses in this area, but again, a good commercial compatible neighbor to the, to the commercial uses. And then the final example, this is actually in the city of Henderson. It's on Eastern and Horizon Ridge, but it is in a commercial shopping center. And it's located, one, SuperPon is located one suite down from an open and existing Albertson's. So I thought that those would be important points to raise for this commission to know that we can be compatible neighbors to other commercial uses. The final point that I'd like to make, if it's appropriate now, or I could wait, there are some additional conditions we'd like to place on the application. So, Mr. Chairman, please tell me at what point you'd like me to do that.
Why don't we go ahead and look at those now? That way, staff can give thoughts.
Okay. First of all, we do agree to the conditions of approval that staff recommended, but we'd also like to agree to a couple of other conditions. The first being that no banner signs would be allowed on the building, so that the building that you see here tonight is the building that we would build and not put banner signs on it. I think another important point is the fact that SuperPon is not a 24-hour location and in fact has limited hours. So we would be willing to agree to a condition regarding hours of operation. And specifically, the condition would state, hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Sunday, from noon to 5:00 p.m. Finally, the next condition, SuperPon does not, this is one of those conditions where we're going to place it on us, but we don't do it to begin with. So when I say the condition, I don't want you to think that this is something we're giving up. We don't do this to begin with. We do not sell guns at any of our locations. However, we want to make sure that that condition is clear for the record. So we would be willing to agree to additional condition that would be no selling of guns at this location. There, we, as part of the administrative, as I mentioned in the beginning, as part of the administrative site plan review, that is where you can look at the site. And we wanted to make sure that you knew that there was a condition on there that required us to make sure that there was a handicap van accessible parking space. That's on the administrative site plan review condition already. I just wanted to point that out for the record. And I have two other conditions. The next condition is that, well, we can't actually place it on as a condition in having conversations with your city attorney, because it gets into a First Amendment issue. But as a company who has been in the valley for twenty years, we want to make a representation to you that we will not place any additional inventory signage on the building. And what I mean by that is, the signage that you see here today, which just advertises the actual company, will be what you see. You won't see the word "tools" or "electronics" on the building. But again, unfortunately, I can't actually make that a written condition, but I wanted to state for the record that the signage you see here today will be the signage you see. You won't see any inventory-related signage in addition to that signage on the building. And my final condition that I would like to offer to the commission is that there will be no payday or check cashing services at this location. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. This was advertised in public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on these items, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Within walking radius of my house, I have four SuperPons. I have no problem with the business at all. I have no problem with the, with the design to keep the stores up nice. However, this company seems to be totally averse to any kind of landscaping at all. To bring it out, we have one on Charleston and Eastern. We have another on Bonanza and, and, and Eastern, right in those, in those shopping areas. There's no landscaping at all. And if I remember right, this, this, these, this, this, these parcels here are, I think, are all owned by Mr. Becker. And they came before this council, once before, and there was a, an issue on the landscaping. And I can't remember what it was right now, but it seems to me that they wanted a variance or something, and it wasn't allowed. But even then, I saw the building, and I didn't see any landscaping at all. And I, I got a problem with this in this area.
And understand, we don't have a site plan before us this evening, so. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Betty Craig. I live at 4416 Elta Drive, and I am the president of the Meadows Neighborhood Preservation. When we were first approached about the pawn shop coming, we automatically all said no. In the meantime, we took a deep breath and decided to do our homework. We went to SuperPon, looked at the merchandise, looked at the employees, looked at the customers coming in. And we decided with economic conditions today, we'd be the ones that would be a fool to turn a business coming into our neighborhood. We have businesses closing all the time. We are the closest neighbor to this SuperPon that wants to come into Decatur. In fact, one of our board members lives right behind the fence, a big fence that separates it, and she does support it too. We did call our neighbors and talk with our neighbors, and they all approved of this. So we do support SuperPon coming into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Zurr, 4308 Elta Drive. I've lived in my home for forty-six years. I'm very protective of my neighborhood, and we want SuperPon.
Thank you. Anybody else here wishing to speak? Seeing, or, come on forward. You can come on down, there's plenty of microphones.
Richard Bratton, 505 Craigan Park Drive. And I've seen the neighborhood gradually decay, and it looks to me like a pawn shop will put in the final nail. There are just a few hundred, not even 200 feet, from residences, open area. And to the south, there are, right across the street, there's a tattoo parlor, a bar. Down the road is another bar. And also, just about 600 feet east of this location is an elementary school. Kids walking around in that area. And also, to the north, about 600 feet, is Western High School, with kids going back and forth there. And people say, well, they need the pawn shop if they're having economic problems. But what do they do after they pawn everything? You know? I think pawn shops bring stolen materials. And I don't, and I think it will downgrade the neighborhood. It's already old. I've lived in that area since about nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy-two, three. And I've seen a gradual decay. And to me, the pawn shop would be the final blow. And they want a variance for the distances, but I think those variances were in place for a real good reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Denise Reitz, 1912 Blue Jay Circle. I do not live in this area, as the ladies do with the Meadows Group, but I do support the pawn shop. It is a nice, beautiful building. It's going to be open during business hours. It's not going, I, I've seen SuperPons. It's a beautiful, well-lit. The people that go into these places, they are from all calibers and all walks of life. So I do believe that this is going to be a positive thing for the neighborhood. It will be something, they're going to have surveillance around the whole building. I don't know if that was something that was brought up. They are going to put beautification, they're going to put shrubbery. I was told about bushes and some small evergreen-type bushes. So I do believe it will beautify the area, and they can help with surveilling the area. So if there are robberies in the other businesses around the area, they can have them on tape and be able to catch them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Becker, 50 South Jones, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89107. I am the landlord. And we've had a long-time relationship with SuperPon. We have three SuperPon locations in our various shopping centers at Cheyenne and Rainbow, Lake Meaden Jones, and Sahara in Decatur. They're an excellent tenant. They fit in well with, with the shopping center. One of the letters that was submitted tonight, Wendy's, they, they're co-tenants at Cheyenne and Rainbow. And it's, it's an excellent addition to the neighborhood. They're, they're coming in, they're prepared to make about a $600,000 investment in our neighborhood with a new facade on the building. And we do have landscaping at that building. And the area that we requested a reduction of two feet in the landscaping was down at Alta in Decatur, where McDonald's and Walgreens and some of those other stores are. So hopefully, you'll look favorably upon this application.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jenny Ingram, Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. That is out of zone, like, it's too close to residential. And, um, two, we had a meeting with Mr. Becker and a group of people. And all of, all except one of us, after we discussed what we had heard at the meeting, we were all against it. Our whole group were against it. So. Anyway, so we're very much against that, in that area. We think it'll bring in crime in the neighborhood, because people do steal things, do robberies and so on, to, to take two pawn shops. So we think it's a bad idea to have it in there. Thank you.
Yes, to add a little more to that, Juanita Clark, Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. We noted that there were 165 cards came, sent out, and one was returned. When we went into the immediate neighborhood, they were quick to respond that they had received cards regarding whether or not Walgreens could sell packaged liquor. And, and we found one person who had, who had a card still from the SuperPon, or Cash Back slash SuperPon. And, and she said, oh, I'm going to mail that in. And we had to tell her that it was too late for her to mail that in. But we were curious how many cards were sent out in that immediate neighborhood to the east of this property. And we don't know where those 165 cards were sent to. But anyway, the people, the people, people, there were not. We're, we're concerned about, about the zoning, about the schools and proximity, that those, the streets immediately to the east, they run smack into East Essex. And that is a street that can't be gone through, and which is where E.W. Griffith is. The people are saying how they have their streets blocked off already by SWAT and things like that, from things that happened in McDonald's. I didn't ask her what was happening in McDonald's, but, but, and, and also, but not, and Wendy's was never mentioned. But that is a, that is a compact area immediately to the east. It's not going to impact probably other places beyond that.
Immediately?
Other than, other than for, we know we need things to pawn. And we have nothing against SuperPon. We all, we, we agree that they are, are attractive buildings when they're inside, and they seem very organized. We've put some of our flyers in there, and we're, we're aware, aware of their inside. I was able to pull up that there are now 79 such buildings in Las, in Las Vegas, Las Vegas area. And that thirty-six of these are either SuperPon or SuperPon slash Cash America, or vice versa. Also, we're concerned because of the amount of property around the, where the SuperPon is going to be placed, or is, is, the plans are for it to be placed there, is some extra space. We're just concerned that later on, as if, if the economy gets, does not get better, that there's going to be then, a request then to maybe start doing autos and things like that. Because truly, as we look over the city council agenda as well as planning, we see more and more bars being, and packaged liquor going in. And we know that we just had an influx of Walgreens doing that, and also pawn shops. And so these truly are where people need to go to get alleviation of some kind to their, to their systems or to their pocketbooks. And we think this is not the place. When we drive down Decatur, that we feel that is not going to be enhanced by having, it's the type of a business, it's not, it's not the type that SuperPon is. We think that they're, they're probably one of the best of the pawn shops. But we are against it being there, and for those people that live immediately to the east. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak on the site, and please come forward. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Ms. Lazovich, I'll give you a couple of minutes to respond to any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Real quick, on the landscaping, I apologize for not pointing that out in the beginning. We are doing additional landscaping along Decatur. However, we actually did work with the neighbors on what kind of landscaping they wanted to see along there. And they liked the concept of lower bushes. There are some trees, but mostly there's lower bushes right in front of our building along Decatur. So we are definitely doing landscaping, and we have worked with the neighbors on, on the way they want to see that. I can make just a general comment, which is I think that vacant buildings don't really help neighborhoods. I think that when you have vacant buildings, you need to look at two things when someone comes before you to ask to be in one of those vacant buildings. One is the reputation of the operator, and what kind of investment are they going to make in the community? And as I pointed out in my initial presentation, SuperPon, I don't think there's any question that they are the leader in the pawn industry. Number, first and foremost, they are an excellent, excellent operator. And they're coming in and asking to spend $600,000 to invest in this building. Conceivably, you could have this building, the way it exists today, no offense to Mr. Becker and the way that Sizzler looks, but you could have someone come in and merely put up a different sign right there for not very much money, and go into that existing location. So you have to weigh the kind of operators that are coming before you as well. And on the final point I'd like to make, just deals with crime and the misconception or the myth that if you have a pawn shop in the neighborhood, it draws crime. That would be the last place that a criminal should take any type of stolen goods. SuperPon in particular, although there are regulations that govern the entire pawn industry, they have to work extremely close with Metro and report everything that is brought in on pawn. So if there is merchandise that's brought in on pawn, actually, that's a great place for them, for them to take it, because it means the people who had it stolen from them are probably going to get it back. But that's not the place that typically criminals go to pawn their stuff, because they know we have such a close relationship with Metro, and that that won't be a place that they can come back and get their merchandise. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments? Commissioner Trowbridge?
Just for, not to reiterate though, but I, I will say that, you know, the name pawn shop carries with it a very, very negative connotation. I, I don't think it's reflective of the way contemporary pawn shops are operated. There's a changing nature and orientation of the businesses, you know. It's probably behind gaming, the most highly regulated business in Nevada. When someone brings something in for pawn, first of all, they're on videotape. They have to give ID. They have to, all the numbers associated with the, whatever they're trying to pawn, a part number, an ID number is all recorded. And so a, a thief is not going to dispose of stolen property at a pawn shop. It's the last place they want to go. They'll sell it out of their car beside a bar. That's, that's where you buy stolen goods. You don't buy them at pawn shops anymore. You know, the business has changed quite a bit, you know? The old place where you fence things went the way of the- The old place where you fenced things went the way of the three balls hanging in front of the business. It just doesn't work like that anymore. You know, the, I think this is a viable location for a very successful business in this town. They've been around for 20 years. They operate in multiple locations with absolutely, probably less complaints than other places. I think I have never heard of a SWAT team responding to an incident at a Super Pond. That's pretty quantum leap there to say that that's what happens at Super Ponds. It's simply not reality. I liked the idea of someone coming into an area that's, can use some refurbishment and see them invest, you know, $600,000 in a building that has currently been vacant for some period now, year and a half or perhaps even more, in an area where there's also certainly no shortage of fast food restaurants. I think it adds a little diversity to the business offerings that exist in the neighborhood. You know, the proximity to a high school is, if my recollection is correct, it's closer to a mile from where Western High School is. That's where my wife was the homecoming queen, you know, not last year, several years ago, you know. But also, the elementary school proximity also is, really doesn't carry any weight because we just don't see kids coming in with their backpacks full of stuff they've taken from mommy to hock it. It doesn't work that way, you know. It's not a place where they hang out. So this proposal, also, at a time where everybody's looking for jobs, to offer 10, 15 additional jobs in the neighborhood is very valuable. And so this proposal's going to see my support.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes. It was a couple of months ago, I was meeting with Jennifer Lazovich on something else, and she said, "By the way, Commissioner Quinn, what do you think about a pawn shop going in on that Sizzler over on Decatur?" And I said, "Absolutely not. No way, no way, no way." So last week, she called, and we sat down, and we met about it, and everything, every reason I thought that it shouldn't go there, she had an answer for. And the one thing I want to say to Mrs. Ingram, who I spoke to on the phone, I talked with Jay Brown for the record, I met with Ms. Lazovich, Mr. Kiefer, what really amazed me was when I went to the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department website and ran the crime report for a half a mile around your project. And there were two burglaries in the last 30 days. And so I thought, "Well, I can't get you there." So then I thought, "I'm going to get you on the hours," because I know Jennifer, and she thinks this place is going to be open 24 hours. And then she sits down, and she gives me these great hours of noon to five on Sunday, and nine to seven on the weekdays. And I go, "Okay, fine, I can't get her there." So then I thought, "I'm going to get her on the signs because I know she's going to plaster all this junk along the thing." And then she shows me this beautiful building, and I go, "Oh, God, can't get her there." So then I thought, "I'm going to get her on..." What else was I going to get you on? "Oh, the downlights." I said, "So Jen, you know, what kind of lights do you have in the back?" She goes, "Oh, we'll put in whatever kind you want." Couldn't get her there. So I spoke with Mrs. Ingram, and I told her, "This is one of my hardest votes today in the year and a half I've been up here." And I think it isn't because of what is going to happen in the pawn shop. I think the stigma of the word pawn shop just makes people feel like our neighborhood is less than something else. But in fact, we're putting in something that is going to enrich the Wendy's next door. People will come out and buy hamburgers. We're going to enrich the Arby's on the other side of the street. And you're not selling guns, you're closing on time, you're lighting up the area. And I just could not find one single solitary reason, Jennifer, to tell you, "No, not one." And I looked for them. You know I did. I mean, this has been tough. So I am going to, the one thing I want to put on the record to all developers in this town, and I really mean this from the bottom of my heart, is that just because your building is sitting empty, don't think every time you come in front of us, we are going to say, "This is going to be a pawn shop," or "This is going to be a payway, cashway, day loan thing." That is not coming out of my lips. What's coming out of my lips is you did find the right location, and you found the right time, and it works, and you will see my support tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Does anybody have anything else to say? With that, did you want to say something?
The conditions of approval that would be considered for your action would be that the hours shall be limited to Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sunday, from noon till five. There should be no firearm sales. There should be no check cashing or payday loan services provided onsite, and there shall be no banners or temporary signage on the building or on the premises.
I'd like to add a one-year review, just to make sure Jennifer follows her...
A one-year administrative review following issuance of business license?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to make an approval for SUP 37576, as amended.
If there are no other comments or questions, the motion is for approval with the amended conditions. Please cast your vote. I guess I have to ask this just for clarifications. Commissioner, you abstained on an earlier issue with regard to...
Well, for purposes of disclosure, I did investigate that earlier today and found out that the principal that's usually involved with the Beckers wasn't involved in this project, so it wasn't necessary for me to abstain.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that so we...
Thank you, Commissioner.
So the motion was approved, and we'll go on to city council on May 19th.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Item 43, SUP 37621, to add a jewelry store class III use to an existing 2,366 square foot auto title loan establishment. And... Good evening.
Good evening. Lucy... Sorry?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a jewelry store class III use, which allows the purchase of gold as a commodity and not for resale, in conjunction with an existing auto title loan establishment. Staff is recommending approval of the request as the use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding uses. Note that five protests and one letter of support were received for these items since publication.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 2211 Rampart. And this is identical to the ones that were approved earlier this evening on the one motion, one vote. And I suspect this item would have been on the one motion, one vote had it not been for the item before it that was held for three months. So we agree to all conditions with, from staff, and would ask for your approval.
Okay, this was advertised as public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side? And please come forward. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioners? We have approved these, and like we did approve these earlier on the one motion, one vote. I can understand the item was withheld for three months, but I'm going to support item 43, but wouldn't, when this other one comes back, it's not going to find a lot of support. If it comes back.
I told that to my client.
And, but we did obey it, so we'll let it go this way.
Actually, I told that to my client before we even made that supplemental, but I have to do what they asked me to.
Yeah, if there are another comments, motion?
I'll take, I'll move to approve item number 43, SUP 37621.
There's a motion for approval, following staff's recommendations. And that is approved, and we'll go on to city council on May 19th.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we go to item 45, Director's Business. DIR 37526, applicant-owner, City of Las Vegas, requests to designate the West Side School as a historic landmark on the City of Las Vegas Historic Property Register, as approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, HPC 37298, at 330 West Washington.
Yes, Commissioner. The Historic Preservation Commission voted to approve the nomination for the West Side School for Designation as an Historic Landmark on February 24, 2010, based on the property's ability to meet the requirements for historic designation as listed in Title 19.06.090, Designation of Landmarks, Historic Properties, and Historic Districts. The property meets the following requirements for historic designation as a landmark. Excuse me. The criteria is that an individual property, building, structure, or archaeological site may be designated as a landmark if it demonstrates exceptional importance by qualifying under sub-paragraphs A or B. A is it meets the criteria for listing on the State or National Register of Historic Places, and it does, as it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. B, it is determined to be of exceptional significance and expresses a distinctive character because a significant portion of it is at least 50 years old, and it does meet that, as it was built in 1923. It is reflective of the city's cultural, social, political, or economic past, and it is associated with a person or event significant in local, state, or national history, or represents an established and familiar visual feature of an area of the city because of its location or singular physical appearance. The school meets all of those requirements. It is, it was opened no later than 1923 as the first grammar school in West Las Vegas. It was the first public school attended by Native American students from the Paiute Indian Colony located approximately one mile from the school. The school was also the first school for two major waves of migrants to the Las Vegas area during the early 1930s and again in the early 1940s as families arrived to find work. And many of them were African Americans from the rural south. The second building on the campus was constructed in 1948 to accommodate the increased population that had moved to the area during World War II. So it clearly meets all of the, all of the requirements, and the Preservation Commission recommends, recommended approval of the designation.
This was advertised as public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the side? And please come forward. Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Any comments or questions? It's an incredible building, it's been there forever. And just for my own clarification, wasn't this originally designated as like Las Vegas Grammar School or something like that?
Yeah, that was the original name. I'm not sure when it got the moniker of the West Side School, but I'm sure that I could find that information for you.
I mean, definitely incredible building, and should be preserved.
It's one of the last of its times.
Ms. Quinn? Mary Ellsworth?
Unless there's any other discussion, I'll move for approval, item number 45.
Motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and we'll go on to city council on May 19th, or, yeah, May 19th.
May 19th.
Now we're going to pull item 53 forward. TXT 37811, applicant-owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to amend Title 19.04, 19.18, 19.20, and the downtown Centennial Plan to add beer/wine/coolers cultural establishment. Do not require outdoor events in the arts district to obtain a temporary commercial permit, and to amend the use of museum or art gallery.
Mr. Chairman, currently, art galleries, art studios, and performing art theaters within the 18B art district who wish to hold cultural events and serve wine during those events are required to seek a special event license from the City of Las Vegas. Special event licenses are required to go before each one, is required to go before the city council. This process is restrictive and cumbersome. The addition of the beer/wine/coolers cultural establishment will allow for art galleries, art studios, and performing art theaters within the 18B art districts to hold these events with limited alcohol and no longer have to seek permission for each event. The other part of this amendment, the term "art gallery" often has led to some art retail locations to be classified as assembly occupancy, be treated the same as a museum, when truly they're not an art gallery, museum, but a art retail location. By making that change, it would better clarify the use. In regards to temporary commercial permits, currently, within the art district, every time you want to have an outdoor art sale or a special art showing outside of your building on your own property, the City of Las Vegas requires a temporary commercial permit. In order to help foster an arts district, it's important that those uses be allowed and be permitted by right. This amendment would allow that on a limited amount of time and a limited space, and there are provisions in there to protect from nuisance items coming into play, and staff does recommend approval of these changes.
Okay. As a matter of disclosure, I do own property in the arts district. I think this is, affects that property, although I have voted on other things related to the arts district that were of a global and a community nature.
Mr. Chairman, as long as this action doesn't affect you in any different manner than it affects other property owners around you, then you're free to vote under the law.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. This is a public hearing, and we wish to speak on the side? And please come forward.
Good evening. Wes Isbert, Arts Factory, 107 East Charleston. I would first like to thank and applaud your director, Wheeler, and her department for making this happen. This is a very large step into creating the ability for us in the arts district to hold the events we hold, the poetry readings, the jazz concerts, just the things that we will naturally do. I can't thank you enough for this. This is going to make it possible for many organizations to easily do something that is accepted in a social manner. We expect when we go to an art gallery to drink wine and be in a social environment. And our city grew up in a certain manner that didn't allow this. And the planning department has seen that and reacted to that, and is making this recommendation. And I can't support it enough, and wish you all to vote yea. And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here wishing to speak on the side? And please come forward. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Commissioner Trowbridge?
If I could, just for a point of clarification, this recommended text amendment change addresses only the facilities in which the culturally activities are held, not outdoor special events. I, in my mind, see a major difference there.
That is correct. For the alcohol use, that is contained, that would be contained within a primary use, an established business already. So that alcohol use would be an accessory to the primary use.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's any other comment.
No.
If none, I move for approval, item number 53, TXT 37811.
There is a motion for approval. And that is approved, and that will go on to city council in ordinance form. Go to item 46, DIR... Okay, we're going to trail item 46, we're going to item 47. TXT 37524, applicant-owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to amend Title 19.08 and 19.12 to provide standards for temporary fencing of construction sites and vacant parcels.
Mr. Chairman, this item was originally tabled by the planning commission as concerns over language in regards to the requirements for the fencing on vacant parcels. Staff has amended, took your comments into consideration and made changes to that. This request will also provide standards for temporary fencing for construction sites. The amendment will provide a remedy for vacant, undeveloped, or abandoned parcels of land that do not meet the minimum requirements set by the Clark County Department of Air Quality and Environmental Management. Such properties may either be fenced pursuant to the new fencing of vacant or abandoned parcel standards, or by the order of the county, prescribed soil stabilization and dust control methods. It would also allow property owners who wish to fence their vacant lot to be able to do that. Currently, under our code, if you want to fence your vacant lot, you can't use chain link. You have to use wrought iron or some other material. You have to use wrought iron or some other material acceptable. Chain link is not acceptable for that fencing to protect your property and, and separate it from other parts. Staff does recommend approval of this, and we're here to answer any questions.
This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
I have a question. How long does a house have to be boarded up and vacant before it's declared abandoned?
If I may, this is all vacant property, no, no, no structures. It's just vacant land.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mayor Goodman indicated that we're going to have a line item in our next City Council meeting to discuss this very issue, so, Mr. Farlow, please be in attendance.
I, I do have a couple of comments, because I, this is something that I experience on a regular basis, because I, as we brought up before, it's important for a property owner to be able to fence their property to make it a safe and secure environment. I think that's public safety and all of those good things that, that we want to promote. The, the one issue is, it's very difficult for a property owner in some of these remote parcels within the city that kids may walk across on a Saturday or something, and then for the sake of a, the county's motivation, there's, you know, suddenly you're, you're being fined or expected to fence a property, or go out and spend thousands and thousands of dollars trying to mitigate something that isn't really, something you can mitigate. The desert is the desert. So I know that we have a dust issue that everybody is concerned about. I suffer like everybody else with allergies and all the other things in this valley, but as most of my clients refer, refer to, the dust police don't do what they're supposed to be doing, because most of these construction issues are on the fringe right of ways, which aren't controllable under that dust, dust permit. So I, I agree with the fencing issue, but I, I believe that we open the door a little bit further for more regulation from a county wanting private property owners to take care of a problem that they have nothing to do with creating. So just, I will support the fencing amendment.
I just wanted to ask, is there a timeline that the fence can be up like two years, five years indefinitely, or?
The current provision is every year they need to come and seek a, a new permit for the fence from the Department of Planning, so that we can review it each time to ensure that it's in, being maintained in proper order and that it's needed at that time.
So they can come back and back and back and back and back and back?
Well, they, they could if it's appropriate. If staff found that the, the permit was no longer appropriate, we would probably deny the permit at that time and, and make other requests, and in that case, they could appeal the decision to the Planning Commission for, for discussion on their, on their fence.
And they would have to make their case at a discretionary hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there are other comments, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move for approval of item number 47, TXT 37524.
And the motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council in ordinance form. We're going to go to item 50, TXT 37573, applicant owner City Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend Table 19.12 and to add requirements for the reconsideration of land use applications by the City, by the City Council.
Thank you. Chairman and members of the commission, currently, there is no provision in Title 19 or in any section of our municipal code with regard to the City Council choosing to rescind and rehear an action that was previously taken. In the interest of codifying this procedure, we researched the requirements of other jurisdictions and found that there is current language within the Clark County Code that allows reconsideration within five working days. The, no other city in the state that we can find has code requirements, although we've heard through staff that the City of Henderson allows reconsideration on a case-by-case basis. The proposal that staff has brought forward is to amend Title 19 to allow a City Council member who voted in favor of a motion that carried to request consideration within 14 calendar days or 10 working days, and then the item to be reconsidered would be placed on the second council agenda after the request. Once the request was approved, then it would be placed on an agenda to be reheard. This would allow for, in, in extraordinary cases, the council to request a rescind and rehear, and give not only the staff a procedure to follow, but also those applicants to have a consistent procedure. That is the request that is before you at this time.
This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North Line, 8th Street. Wouldn't it just be a lot easier to put one year reviews or six month reviews on, on this stuff?
The issue is, if I may, that if the council themselves, they've already voted on something, and they want to rescind that vote and rehear that vote, so it's not the case per se, it's the vote that they want.
Well, they knew that at their council, during the council meeting. They asked to call something back.
No, this isn't the same as, at the same council hearing. This is after the hearing is over.
Thank you. And Director, that would be just the, the City Council.
Correct.
Can have that option, right?
Correct.
Director, and for the City Attorney, the question I have is, we have the normal appeal process for planning, which is 10 days, right?
Yes, by the applicant.
Which I think customarily people have kind of worked under the belief that if something goes past 10 days, it's, there's not a further appeal. I, I think the, a property owner has some rights, because a lot of times, property transactions close within a period of time of an approval. And customarily, I've, I've heard for years and years that that was 10 days. And I, I think somebody in, could close on a piece of property, own it, think they have their zoning entitlements in place, and have a reconsideration that could take 60 days.
So you're thinking 10 instead of 14?
I'm just, I, I think it, it opens up a, a very serious question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Can you hear me here? I don't usually sit down in this, in this chair, but what I, what I think I hear you saying is, all right, so we've already got a 10 day, we've already got a 10 day appeal period from Planning Commission to City Council, right? And then we have City Council hearing. City Council may, takes final action on an item, on a land use item. What then I hear you say is, okay, what happens now if the City Council can then recall an item up to 14 days after they've made a final decision? What does that do to land transactions here in the City of Las Vegas? It's a good question, but here's the thing. Practically speaking, this isn't to be used as a means for appeal. This is to be used in case a City Council, and Planning Director, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is to be used if a City Council person that was on the prevailing side wants to rehear an item for some reason. I think what I hear you say is, it's possible that a City Council person could recall an item and the outcome could change, and that could, that could throw a wrench into a possible land transaction. It is possible, I suppose. The fact of the matter is, there are some items that, when approved by final action, if there is no lawsuit filed, if they, if the applicant is relied to his detriment upon the final action and started to spend some money, the City Council may get some advice from the City Attorney's Office about whether or not they can take adverse action on these items. I can't tell you today, and I won't speculate today on which items we would give advice against taking adverse action on, but I think we, we at the Attorney's Office would help the council people look at these items on a case-by-case basis, to determine whether or not legally there would be some claim for damages from an applicant if we wrongly reversed a decision on an item.
And if I may, since 2000, there have been an average of five reconsiderations per year, with the average time elapsed between the decision and reconsideration of over 90 days.
Frankly, Chairman, if I may, in my, in my estimation, it's, it's better for the public to understand that we have a time period for rescind and reconsider on these items, instead of the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, trying to decide whether or not it's appropriate to rescind and reconsider at some point in the future. This does add a certain amount of clarity to the subject.
And, and I, I understand that, and I, one, I understand the, the council's absolute right to, you know, reconsider something that they've voted on. I guess I was trying to, you know, I thought maybe the consistency of a 10-day period as opposed to 14 days might, might be more understandable from the public's perspective. I've seen this happen in the county to, to great detriment, but.
I, I wonder if the 14-day period was chosen, because 14 days after final action from a council meeting is another council meeting, for the most part. I wonder if that is the reason why. And I wonder that if we made it 10 days and we don't reach the next council meeting.
But are you able to, I mean, technically, are you able to go to a council meeting and vote on an item that isn't agended?
Well, we, we would, we would agendize the, the item.
But how can you get proper notice?
You're right.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of it, because I.
Notice is 72 hours for the posting of the agenda.
Okay.
It is, it is possible, under, because the open meeting law says we have to give notice three days prior at 9:00 AM to any meeting for action to take place, that on the fourth day prior, there is a request to reconsider. Could also happen on the 14th day.
Okay.
So, but here's the deal. It's up to this board as to what you want to recommend to our council. If 10 days sounds more appropriate, then by all means, please recommend 10 days.
If I may.
Commissioner Trubisky?
We've, the, part of the staff report that Director Wheeler was quoting says that the, the average over the last 10-year period has been 98 days, and now we're establishing a 14-day period. If the average has been 98, how do we feel that a 14-day is going to help us? The people that want to request a reconsideration after 14 days, are they going to say, sorry, you only had 14 days and that's expired, and I wonder if we might be hurting ourselves by making it too close?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, remember, it's not people that will be, it's not people in quotes requesting reconsideration, it'll be council persons.
All right, well, the council then need to be controlled somewhat, I guess, because if they've been averaging 98 days, and now we're going to tell them, well, you got to do it within 14, perhaps there's some education or some training programs that will have to be put on for our city council people.
Certainly, absolutely.
I said that, you know, tongue-in-cheek.
Of course.
Any other comments? Motion? Commissioner Quinn? Or Glenn?
In regards to item number 50, text number 37573, make a motion for approval.
That is approved, and we'll go on to City Council in ordinance form. Now, we go to 51, TXT 37635, applicant owner City Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend Title 2 of the, and, Title 2 of Title 19.02 and Title 1920 to modify use standards for community residents commonly referred to as group homes and similar uses.
I thought maybe Doug would be introducing me, but.
That's what I was expecting. I mean, a grand introduction, the whole thing, but no.
This presentation will be made by our City Attorney, Jim Lewis.
You may or may not know me. My name is Jim Lewis. I'm Deputy City Attorney here at the City of Las Vegas. The address is 400 Stewart, 9th floor. What am I doing here tonight? Well, I am doing a few things. I'm here to talk about the necessity for changes to our Title 19 use standards for what are commonly known as group homes. I'm going to start calling them community residences here on out, because that's what the new terminology is going to be. I'm going to highlight for you the highlights of the new changes. I am going to tell you that this is a little different than most of the ordinances we bring to the Planning Commission, where we, we bring them to you, ask you for some, some input, and then they go back and then we draft the ordinance. In this case, I've already drafted the, the changes. The changes have already been reviewed by the Group Home Task Force. They've already been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Department, or Planning Development Department, and they're ready to go to council in this form if there are no recommendations for amendments by this body. So if approved as is, we're going to take this to council recommending and to council at the end of May, and ask for their adoption of this, these changes. So if I can have the commission's indulgence, I'm, I'm going to run through a very quick 20-slide PowerPoint presentation, and then I would just.
20 seconds.
20, yeah, 20 seconds, 20 slide.
Oh, slide.
20 slide. I'll try to take only 20 seconds, but then I would short you on information you may want to know. So 20 slides, I would ask your indulgence, let me finish the 20 slides, because I think there will be questions you might have that could be answered by one of the 20 slides. If you have to, please interrupt, but I think if I get through them, I'll answer most of your questions.
We'll, we'll let you roll through them, and then.
Okay.
We'll save our questions.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, please. All right, so why, why are these amendments necessary? Well, two things. One, there is an informal group of folks at the city who've been tasked over the last 18 months to two years, we call them the Group Home Task Force. There's members of the City Attorney's Office, Neighborhood Services, Planning and Development, Business Licensing, and our Code Enforcing Division on this task force. We found out about a case in June of 2008 that invalidated the state land use regulatory process for community residences. I'm going to call them congregate care facilities, because there are a whole host of them. Could, could be Alzheimer's homes, could be sober living homes, could be homes for those with severe depression, could be any number of different homes, but homes for the disabled and other homes. But what we found out is that the state land use regulatory process was invalidated by Nevada Federal District Court. Well, our regulatory process was based upon that state law process. What that means is we have arguably an invalid process based upon this federal court decision. Two, in December of 2008, we had an industry group come to us and say, hey, listen, there is a federal court, a federal district court decision that's invalidated the state process, which yours is based upon, and we believe that your process may be violative of the federal law the way the states was. Well, what we did, what the task force did, oh, that's right, I don't have the clicker. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next slide, please. All right. So what the task force did was we, we went to city management, we said, look, what we found. Our. found are some inconsistencies with our code and federal law based upon this Nevada Supreme Court, or this, this federal district court decision." Next slide. The city management then directed the task force to, to propose amendments to the law, to our process, to bring it in line with federal, with federal laws, federal anti-discrimination laws, before you tonight of these revisions. Next slide, please. Okay, I want to, I want to make sure that we all understand where we've been. We started this process in December of 2008. The city educated itself as to the, the three different federal anti-discrimination laws. We had community meetings. The first two were June 25th, 2009, there, and July 2nd, 2009. We had these community meetings to engage the public, engage the industry, let them ask questions of us and tell them what it is we plan to do. We had two more meetings in February of this year. Those meetings were to inform the electorate and inform the industry as to what I was, what we were preparing to bring to you and to the city council. Next slide, please. So let me talk just really briefly about federal law. We've got three anti-discrimination laws that we're talking about here. These anti-discrimination laws frankly, hamper and affect the city's ability to freely regulate congregate care facilities, group homes, community residences, whatever it was we're going to call them. These three are the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 88, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Federal Rehabilitation Act. These three acts require us to treat the disabled as we would the non-disabled. Next slide, please. Basically, it prohibits discrimination against disabled, period, end of story. Basically, any city ordinance that regulates the occupancy of single-family dwellings must treat the non-disabled and the disabled similarly. Next slide. Federal courts have found municipalities to violate these anti-discrimination laws in three ways. One, we have laws that discriminate on their face. That means, in the words, "We treat a home that houses the disabled differently than a home that houses the non-disabled, the traditional family." That's violative of federal law. Also, courts find that we violate federal law, municipalities that is, if our code doesn't discriminate on its face but as applied, so in its actions, we end up discriminating against the disabled. And lastly, a municipality can violate federal laws when we fail to provide a reasonable, reasonable accommodation when requested. And in, in December of 2008, we were asked to reasonably accommodate two sober living homes, and what we decided to do was, for lack of a better term, fix our code to get it right moving forward. Next slide, please. Okay, what's really important is for you all and the public to understand who are the disabled for purposes of this law? Because many times, there's misconceptions about what, who these federal laws protect and who they don't. We're talking about persons with depression, persons with Alzheimer's disease, persons with autism, persons with lack of mobility. The one that is controversial and is in federal law and in federal case law, persons recovering from drug and alcohol addiction who are not currently using drugs and alcohol are disabled as a matter of law and receive the protections of these three acts. Next slide, please. Who are not disabled and who are not protected by the changes here? Any person not afflicted with a legal disability. So if you're not afflicted with a legal disability, these changes don't permit houses that have these folks to come into residential neighborhoods, ex-felons, sex offenders treating, seeking treatment, non-disabled foster kids, and non-disabled ju, released juvenile offenders. These classes of folks don't receive protection as disabled under these three anti-discrimination laws. Next slide, please. So basically, what happened in the case that went before, in 2008, that went before the, the Nevada federal district court, it found that the state law and county code violated the FHAA, the federal fair, the federal housing amendments act on its face. Because the state law singled out these congregate care facilities from home, traditional family homes. Two reasons. One, there was a minimum spacing requirement of 1,500 feet between these homes, and there wasn't a distance separation between non-disabled homes, homes that house non-disabled folks, and the state law required an official registry for these facilities, and that was found to be violative on its face. Next slide, please. So, the city's regulatory process being based upon state law, and that state law being found invalid, the, the Group Home Task Force is recommending to you, and recommending to the city council, that we, we come into compliance with the federal district court findings and federal law. Next slide. Our amendments are based primarily, and a large part, on the Clark County Congregate Care Regulatory Reforms adopted in December 2008 to settle their lawsuit with Nevada Fair Housing Center. And now let me just run through a, a quick summary of our amendments. Next slide. So basically, what you have before you is striking three definitions: group residential care facility, individual residential care facility, and halfway house of recovering alcohol and drug abusers. Why? Next slide. We're replacing those three terms with one term to lessen the confusion as to what these things are. They're replacing the term "community residence," of which there are two types, family community residences and transitional community residences. The way best to explain this is that a community residence is a single-family dwelling that will house between five and 10 disabled folks, and those residents are to be treated as single-family residences for purposes of all building and fire codes, unless those proposed residents can't adequately ambulate. That means walk to get out if there's a fire. One change that we made that the county didn't, the county basically said, "You're to treat all of these community residences of the same and therefore no sprinkling, no wider hallways, no changes based upon the ability to ambulate at all." We, we decided here, it was important to give our building and our fire folks the ability to require different standards to help folks that can't walk or can't find their way out of a house in a fire. We wanted them to be able to require some things to make sure they could get out if there was some sort of tragedy at the home. Next slide. One of the other amendments we make is to the definition of family. The new definition of family means two, one of two things. Occupancy of dwelling unit by basically any number of related folks up to our housing code limit, or four or fewer unrelated folks. As an aside, the Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court, has already decided that we can treat unrelated folks living as a single housekeeping unit differently than individuals that are related. And so that's why we have a dichotomy here. Next slide, please. One of the other changes we're making is a reduction of the distance separation requirement from 1,500 feet property-to-property line to 660 feet in the shortest pedestrian or vehicular route. What that means is you could have them backed up, one against the other, as long as they're 660 feet between the two. The reason this change is made is because in Nevada federal district court opinion, opined that probably zero was the right number under federal law for distance separation requirements. I think I can adequately defend, based upon 660 feet using the pedestrian or vehicle route, because the federal law, the anti-discrimination laws, talk about providing a community-like environment instrumental for the recovery and well-being of the disabled. So basically, the law's intent is to avoid clustering, and this 660 feet will help us avoid clustering. Next slide, please. Now, regarding special use permits, there's a change. If a special use permit is needed for a community residence, that means a residence with between five and 10 disabled folks, the city must approve the SUP unless one of the following exists. One, they propose the building to be modified in such a way that it's out of character with the neighborhood. Two, the number of community residences on any given street would create an institutional atmosphere, basically a clustering of these homes. And three, we could reject the, the SUP if the community residence doesn't comply with life safety requirements, or the tenants are proven to be a direct threat to others. Next slide. Another change is, we're going to have a conditional use verification requirement. And so when somebody comes in and they want to operate one of these, the intent is to have the planning department utilize this tool in order to understand what it is they do, so our code enforcement department can understand what they are approved for. Next slide. Here's the practical effect, and bottom line, four or fewer individuals, disabled, non-disabled, doesn't matter, four or fewer individuals are permitted use in a single-family dwelling. That's important. That's where we're treating, that, what we're saying is, you can have as many related family members living in a house as you like, but since the, the Supreme Court has told us we can treat unrelated folks differently, we say, "You can have four or less unrelated folks living in a home at any time." Then, we have a built-in reasonable accommodation for the disabled. If the, if you're, if you are going to house the disabled, we say between five and 10 in a single-family home are a conditional use, as long as you comply with the conditions. The, the main one being the 660-foot separation requirement. And then unchanged really is an SUP, a special use requirement for 11 or more unrelated disabled individuals. That would still come before you. If somebody wanted to operate a congregate care facility in a residential neighborhood, that would be an SUP. Next slide, please. We really believe that adopting these changes will put us into compliance with the district court opinion that was issued in 2008, as well as the relevant federal anti-discrimination laws. Next slide. So now, let me take comments, questions, and explain what it is we're trying to do here.
Let's, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing for any comments and then...
Thank you, Todd Farworth, 240 North Line, Keith Street. Does this affect the R1? Because R1 states that everybody in that house has to be a family, have to be directly related. That's, that's one question. The, the second question, and this is really important on this, is there a square footage on how many, like, per person? Like, my house is 870 square feet, I mean, it's great for two people. I mean, to pack four or five people in there would just, with bunk beds, it'd just be insane. So, so I wondered if there's a, a, a square footage requirement on, on the house? And just a comment on the distance separation, I really, really think that, well, there's other things that have to be taken into context here. Let me explain it. If you put a, a group home where I am, like that, it's got 28-foot streets, which means, and no sidewalks, so we're really restricted to have, I mean, is traffic taken into consideration here? I guess that's, that would be my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first, the first question I heard was about R1 zoning districts, and whether or not the folks living in single-family homes in R1 zoning districts must be directly related. The answer is no. The Supreme Court, the United States Supreme Court for years has been clear about that. Our code is being changed to be very specific as to who may reside in single-family residence in all of our, our classifications. The new code says, "As many related folks up to the limits set by our housing code," and I'll get to that, that's part of the second question he asked, "or four or fewer unrelated individuals." So by changing the code, practically, we're making it illegal for five college roommates to live in a single-family house. Just, that's, that's important to understand. As many related people as per our housing code, four or fewer unrelated folks. The second question was, is there a square footage? The answer really is, ah, not really. It has to do with our housing code. Our housing code says this, you can have a maximum of seven people in a one-room SRO, and you add two more for every bedroom in the dwelling. So, if you have one bedroom, that's nine, two bedrooms is 11, three bedrooms is 13, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, let's see, what's next? Oh, distance separation question. The, the distance separation, well, his, his question, well, what he stated was a comment, and I think his comment was, "There are other things we've got to look at when we talk about distance separation." Unfortunately, what I'm here to say to you tonight is that because of the federal laws, and because of this recent Nevada federal district court opinion, that seems to indicate that, that zero is the appropriate number for distance separation, I'm trying to find us a middle ground that doesn't get us immediately sued when we pass this ordinance. I believe that I can reasonably defend 660 feet. I know that I can't defend 1,500. Chairman?
Commissioner Olson. By the way, who is the judge on that federal case? Do you know?
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. Larry Hicks, Judge Hicks.
Now, so let me make sure I understand some things. SUP, I understand, that still comes before the planning commission, city council.
Yes.
The conditional use permit, though, you said, that's five to 10 people, correct?
Yes, correct.
Who's going to make that decision on the, on the conditional use permit?
It's a permit, as you, as you know, conditional uses are permitted uses as long as they meet all the conditions.
So if they meet all the conditions, five to 11, five to 10 people, then planning departments can make the decision, will not come before anybody.
It's not, and really, it's not a planning department decision as long as they meet the conditions. That's what I wanted to be clear about. Conditional uses are permitted as a matter of law if they meet the conditions.
Yeah, but who makes the decision whether they're meeting the conditions?
Oh, well, we're going to require a conditional use verification form, and then we, the city, will, will make sure they meet the conditions. If they don't, they'll either be forced into an SUP, or they won't be permitted to operate.
So that, that's the part I struggle with, because, I mean, as it is now, if I understand it correctly, I can go into any neighborhood.
Yep.
I can buy a house, and I can load it up with 10 people, as long as I meet all those requirements, and nobody can do anything about it.
Well, let, let me be clear. You would have to comply with our new code for community residences. It would have to be five to 10 disabled people. Remember, what this, what these laws...
But I understood the definition of disabled.
What these laws do is protect, what, what the intent of these laws do is to protect the, well, let me, let me step back. The reason these laws were, were adopted by the federal government in the first place is because the federal government found that municipalities across the country were excluding the disabled a place to reside. And so, the federal government stepped in with an amendment to the Federal Housing Act in 1988. And what it attempted to do was say, "Cities, we're going to kind of take discretion away from you on these decisions. What we're going to do is we're going to say, you've got to treat, you've got to treat the, a, a person who owns a single-family home that's housing with disabled the same as a person with a home housing with non-disabled." So, in, in one instance, you might have a big family, two parents and seven children, right? We've got that in Las Vegas.
That's what I have.
Is that, okay, that's what you have. The question then is, well, what the law would say is, we've got to make sure we treat the disabled, the unrelated disabled folks the same, or, well, similarly.
Yeah, but the definition of disabled includes... Yeah, but the definition of disabled includes recovering drug addicts and recovering alcoholics.
By law, yes.
So I could load it up with 10 recovering drug addicts, and there's nothing anybody could do about it?
Correct.
That kind of bothers me.
I know.
Should there be something that comes, at least before the planning commission, somebody, so there's a public body to review that and say, hey, look, is this going to be acceptable or not?
Excuse me, Mr.?
Here's what we've done.
What did Mr. Ellsworth just ask, as I was talking to Margo?
What, what, what Commissioner Ellsworth asked is, something that everybody asked me, why can't we get this before a discretionary board for discretionary approval? And the fact of the matter is, the case law has told me that we cannot do that. And the reason being, and let me, and let me try to-
I, I don't interpret that, at least the way you, I haven't read the case, but at least the way you're presenting here.
Yeah.
I don't interpret it that way. I don't see that I have to do that.
Well, let me explain it to you, please. So, we have, we have our standard law. The standard law is, in an R1, single fam, in a residential district, we allow families to live in these homes. A family must be, by prior United States Supreme Court rulings, related folks and unrelated folks. All right? They must be. We can't say just families can live in neighborhoods.
Right.
So, now that we said that, and we allow unrelated folks to live in neighborhoods, we've got to allow disabled, unrelated folks to live in neighborhoods the same way. Okay? Now, the next step is, what happens, well, the next step is, what are your, what are the municipal rules regard to who can live in these neighborhoods, these, these residential neighborhoods? So you look to the family requirement. Our family requirement is proposed to be as many related folks as you can get into a house, up to our, up to our housing code, or four or fewer unrelated folks. We're putting a cap on unrelated folks, because the Supreme Court has said we can't. Now, when, well, the Ninth Circuit said we can. So, so what, now I've lost, I'm sorry. Margo, you're, you're making me lose my train of thought.
Let me help you, I want to know why I, why I have to allow, or why the city has to allow up to 10 recovering alcoholics in my, in my neighborhood, right, right next door, and there's nothing I can do about it?
Because recovering, recovering alcoholics are disabled as a matter of law.
Sure, but why do I have to allow 10? I can see allowing two or three in a home, why do I have to go all the way up to 10?
Because the, the, the case law over the last 20 years has indicated to us that 10 is about the right number. What the courts are, what the courts have said is, there are plenty of houses with families with six, seven, eight, 10 members, non-disabled. City, if you're going to allow a nine-member household with the cars that come along with a nine-member household, and the friends that come over with, with a nine-member household, you can't go and say, the nine-member disabled household can't exist. That's, that's the gist of the, the case law that comes down on these, on these federal anti-discrimination regulations.
I don't buy it. I mean, I see the point, I see the argument, but I don't buy it. There's a difference between a family and, and a bunch of recovering drug addicts. I see a big difference.
So that's why the, this is, this is the precise reason why the law was changed in 1988, because boards and commissions across the United States were saying the same thing. And what the federal government decided to say was, you know what? What we're going to do is put in, we're going to put into effect a bunch of different anti-discrimination laws. And one of the things we're going to do with, the one that's most controversial, the, the drug addict, the recovering alcoholics and recovering drug addicts who are not currently For, for, for whatever reason, Congress decided that those persons were disabled under the terms of the law, and should receive the same protection.
But, in, in technical terms, aren't, isn't this ruling, or what we're being asked to, to look at here, providing a community residence a higher standard, a higher commitment than what a typical family would have? Because it's, it's a business. I mean, in, in most cases, it's, there's, there's a revenue source. If I live with my wife, and four kids, and a cousin, I, I'm typically not running a business. My, my roots go to my neighborhood, I made a commitment to be in that neighborhood, I made an investment in my neighbors, I made an investment in my own well-being in a community.
Yes.
But yet, in the, the sake of this ord, or what this ruling says, no matter what you, what a community feels, and I'm not saying discriminatory, I'm just saying, I want to live with families and families, but yet, that's not discriminatory, in my view, to a guy who wants to make 300 bucks a head, putting drug rehab, 10 people in his house, so suddenly, the house isn't maintained to the same standards, or, or, but the, the impact on the neighborhood is, now I've got this group there, but oh, by the way, we can't list it, so if, if it's an Alzheimer's home, and there's a fire, if the city has a listing of these group homes, the firemen, when they arrive at that building, they know that there's a, there are people in there that maybe won't respond to, hey, get out, there's a fire.
Right.
Okay? As opposed to not having a list, and the firemen are there, and they're hoping somebody stands up and does something. I'm, I'm just trying to, the reality of the world is, we should know where group homes are.
Right.
And I'm not saying that's a discriminatory issue, it's just a public safety issue. And, and I think the court, and I'm not an attorney, but in this regard, we have this district court that could care less about community standards and rules.
And, and the, and my, I suppose-
That's my state's rights and my home rule issue, and my Tea Party beating the door down, I mean, come on.
What I would say is, the, the anti-discrimination laws were, were built to do just that. They want, if, if I, the, this, the group home task force could have taken a different tack, which is, look, they're, what these laws really want us to do is to see community residences the same way we see single-family homes, with no regulation, none, nothing, nada. That's, that's really what they want to, that's what they want it to do. That's what they want us to do, that's what they want others, other municipalities to do. The fact of the matter is, I'm trying to find a legal middle ground for you. I'm the messenger that's heard this message going on for a year and a half, and I appreciate hearing it from, from you, so I can try to explain what it is, and why it is I have to be here with this message. Getting back to Commissioner Ellsworth, your question, here's how, here's how it works. And Chairman Trisdale, you asked the question in a different way, but basically, why 10 unrelated folks if the law is going to be four or fewer unrelated folks without disabilities? I think I heard that question in there. The answer is this, the law requires us to reasonably accommodate the disabled and those that house the disabled. And so instead of having a reasonable accommodation statute, what we've done, like Clark County's done, is build in the reasonable accommodation, which is, for the disabled only, you can have more than four unrelated folks. You can have five, between five and 10, as long as you comply with these standards. I'm not here, I'm not here as you see many private attorneys that come before us. I'm not representing a point of view, right? I'm not trying to advocate. What I'm doing is, I'm saying, we've found a case, well, we know what the federal law is, we now have a local state case that tells us that our law is violative, whether we like it or not. We're now on, not constructive notice, actual notice, that our law is violative to at least one federal district court judge. If we don't change, there are some consequences.
Potential consequences. I mean, nothing's happened yet, we have been sued, right?
I have, one of the reasons we're doing this is because there is a very well-funded advocacy group, advocacy group out of Chicago, of, called, well, they're called Oxford Houses, they're sober homes. They, they were ready to file an action against the city in January of 2008. Because of our willingness to listen to the need for, for reasonable changes to our regulatory program, they said they'd wait.
Well, can I make us some suggestions on it, then?
I, absolutely. Please.
If they want, you want to make it look, you want to say this is a family in the ordinary sense, or, or, but, but with a different definition, well, let's make it be an ordinary family. In other words, the owner of the property's got to reside there, and he doesn't charge any money for people, for people being there. I mean, why, I don't charge anything for my children to be there, why, why does he get that privilege to charge?
Because you could, because you could, and because you can. We can't say they can't. That's the, that's, remember, we got to treat the homeowner that has a single, has a traditional family, the same as the guy that owns the house, that's going to rent his rooms out to others. We have no rule in the city of Las Vegas that says that you can't rent out rooms in your house.
Oh, we frequently do that. We frequently say, you can have this add-on, but you can't rent it out, it's for single-family use only, and I guess your definition's going to be, well, but that's the single family? Is that what, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Lewis, may I make one comment and ask you one quick question? It's getting late.
Please.
I live and eat and breathe and sleep this every day of my life.
Yes.
I could have been your neighbor as an alcoholic, because I'm 20 years sober. I could have been your neighbor with a disabled child, because I live with one every day, a young man. So you're looking at that person that could be right next door to you, because it could have been me. And I, it's not different. It's not different because I'm a planning commissioner, sitting here in a suit, and I beat it, and I made it. I could have been your neighbor in a sober house. For some reason, I got through it. I live every day with the most disabled child in the world, and I know what the word discrimination means, and I know how hard it is to get in a room with him. And I want to know, most importantly, after I sang my blues a little bit to you, why and when the county didn't act on this? Because I would, I'm going to follow up and write them a letter, because I don't believe this should be just for the city, I believe it should be for the entire city and, and the county.
Oh, the county has.
And Stephen goes everywhere.
Yes.
And this old drunk here from 20 years sober goes everywhere. So my point is, is that, you know, this is a step forward for a lot more people than you think. People in suits, people that are homeless, people that look like drug addicts. I certainly wouldn't be that face behind those person you think. I am one. So I would like to know how, and why, and when the county did not pass this, because I would like to contact them.
No, actually, what happened was, in 2000, I'll be very quick, I know it's getting late. What happened was, changes came from the state legislature in 2007. The county made changes, the city made changes to our code based upon what the state told us to do. Okay? So we've got the, the state regulatory program that we must follow. In 2007, the county got sued by the Nevada Fair Housing Center, because they asserted that the county's code was discriminatory. The county said, whoa, wait a second, this is a Dillon's Rule state, we're just following what the state told us to do. The judge said, we'll bring the state in. State got in, judge said, that violates the law. It's invalid. County wants to get rid of the lawsuit. So what do they do? I, I won't call it consent decree, but what happened was, the judge oversaw a compromise, and that was a change to their code. And it's very much like the one that we're proposing to you today. And that change happened in December 2008. And so, we found out about a lot of this in December 2008, when they passed their new code. And we've been working on this now for about 18 months. And it's been, it's been a good 18 months, because we've had many neighborhood meetings, community meetings, to explain what it is we're doing, to try to explain why it is we have to do it. Look, the fact of the matter is, we, we suggest, you, the council, make the decisions. I wouldn't sit here and tell you have to do anything. I'm just suggesting that we need to, we need to come closer to what the federal district court believes is not violative of the law. And what I've, what I've, what we've put together, me, planning, neighborhood services, code enforcement, is a code revision package that we think will get us where we need to be. It's frustrating to many, Commissioner Ellsworth, that you could have a sober, you could have a sober house as a permitted use in a single-family neighborhood. The fact of the matter is, the way we've written our conditions, if it looks anything different than a single-family house, then it can't be there. The fact of the matter is, it's got to blend with your community. If it doesn't blend, then it's not allowed, it's not allowed to be there. If they have people that are a danger to your community, they can't have those people there. That's got to be proven. We can't just say they're, they're recovering alcoholics, and so therefore they're dangerous. But the fact of the matter is, we have an obligation under the law to make sure that we understand what the federal courts call discriminatory action and discriminatory conduct, and we have an obligation to make sure that we don't do that, especially now that we're on notice. And we were talking about actions and what could happen. It's not the lawsuit that I'm scared of, for us. What I'm scared of is a complaint filed with Housing and Urban Development. It's free to file a complaint. What does that do? Federal law says within 72 hours, they have to assign an investigator. And then, the investigator comes down to the city. And then where does that go if they find violation? It goes to the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice then is permitted, well, the Department of Justice then investigates, and they file an action against the city. So, you don't even have to have money to hire a lawyer to, to have an action filed against the city to compel us to comply with the law. And for any of you, I would offer to, to come to your office, to sit down with you, to, to do, it sounds like, to do a more in-depth job, to, to have a better discussion with you about why it is the law is the way it is, the federal laws it is.
Well, are the, are the operators regulated by something outside the city, or?
Oh, yes, that's a good question. Thank you. There's a, there, we regulate land use. The state regulates conduct. Okay? So, we need to get our, our laws in line with federal law, notwithstanding whatever it is the state does. The state regulates conduct. A two-person individual residential care, which would be a permitted use under our code, still has to get licensed by the state. A six-person sober house still has to get licensed by the state. We're the, we're the, we're the land use step, they're the regulatory step. And so, to answer your question, it's not just get yourself approved under the land use, and it's a, it's a free-for-all. We do our best to control the land use to make sure that these homes that cater to the disabled blend with the community, find themselves no different, so we don't have community issues. And if there are, we've got our code enforcement department to go in there and make changes.
If, the way you described the, the housing and what's disabled, and you, and you made a list of the, you know, the, what is classified as a dis, we could have five judges tomorrow, expand that list, right?
It is, it is possible that a, a federal district court somewhere in the United States could hear a new case about a new disability, and then a circuit court of appeals affirm this new disability. That wouldn't apply to the Ninth, that wouldn't apply to our state unless it was the Ninth Circuit or the United States Supreme Court. Where I think you're going is, uh-oh, is-
Women with purple hair- Women with purple hair are suddenly a...
Well, is sex addiction a disability? I mean, I, I get, I've had that question from the folks that come to see us in the community meetings. The answer is, it's not.
Not yet.
We can't control what the courts do, with all due respect.
Right, no, I understand.
But I will tell you that if a Florida court, a Florida federal district court found that sex addiction was a disability, I wouldn't be up here before you saying, let's include that as a disability. I would have, I would want to see that a federal district court judge in Nevada decided that same rule, and that it went to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, and they affirmed it. It's, it is problematic, and I understand the concern from the commission. That's why I, I don't necessarily like being the messenger on this one, but someone's got to be. And so, that's, that's why I'm here.
And I agree with you. I mean, you've got to do, you have to do with regard. I think it would be errant on, at least me personally, and as a commissioner, if I didn't try to raise where I think we aren't doing what we should be doing to protect, I mean, one of the, the underlying philosophies of the city is protect our neighborhoods and neighborhood standards, and all of the little buzzwords and the little cliches, walkable communities, the whole thing that we all spend a lot of time on. And yet, we're, we're being asked to, for, for whatever reason, I mean, the reasons that you've provided, give a, what I feel is a class of people or users or whatever, some, I think what we're doing is giving somebody a greater standard than what we give our own families. Because I, I get to elect who I live with, but now a court's saying who I have to live next door to. But, and I, I don't have a problem with that. It's not a, it's not a racial issue. It's not a, any of these, these issues. I believe our neighborhoods are what they need to be. But, when you talk about a group home, a for-profit business, usually, I mean, and whether it's a not-for-profit or whatever these guys operate under, somebody's still making a lot of money. It's federal money, or it's state money, or it's grant money to run a group home that I have to pay my taxes, live with, and have to have something greater affect my quality of life. That, to me, is offensive in some regards. That's why I like our codes. We can, we don't cluster these and stuff. But, in Clark County, the state demographer shows that an average dwelling has 2.8 people in it. So, the average person in Las Vegas is living in a neighborhood where he's got 2.8 people around him. But yet, we know that the group home's going to be at the max number, no matter what. I mean, I just, I haven't seen one yet that is, is kind of running.
Sure.
And it, it just, it's a concern, and I think the majority of the people that live in this community are unaware of this issue until it becomes their neighbor.
Possibly. Chairman, may I, may I respond actually to the idea of the business? Here's, there is, there is no, I, I've done an exhaustive search. Out of hundreds of cases, I found one in Arizona where a judge kind of touched on this business issue. The fact of the matter is, if we, the city of Las Vegas, allow folks to rent single-family homes for money to the non-disabled people, to non-disabled people, we must allow the same for the disabled folks. It's, that's what federal law says. We can't treat, we can't, we can't have a class of citizen that is non-disabled and a class of citizen that is disabled. The idea is we're supposed to be blind to it. And so, for example, one of the big complaints is a company called Pinnacle. Pinnacle owns roughly 600 houses in Las Vegas. Who do they rent to? They rent to the disabled. Why can't we do something about, why can't we treat Pinnacle differently because they're a business? It's because there are also people that own hundreds of homes in Las Vegas that rent them out for profit to the non-disabled. So, the fact of the matter is, I don't want to recommend to this board or to the city council that we be the guinea pig in the United States of America for whether or not we can regulate a business differently, or a group home differently, because it's a business. And I'm not being flippant, commissioners. I, I'm, I'm trying to be heartfelt here. Because we, because we know that a local district court judge has found our program violative, if we continue to utilize this program, we've now walked into willful territory. And there comes a whole host of consequences that are different because of that. And again, this isn't to pressure you to make a decision. It's just what it is. And so, that's why I'm here before you tonight. The fact of the matter is, if I, if you'd like me to come back with a better explanation, I certainly can. You know, I, I'm trying to get it on to, we're trying to get it on to a May council meeting, but you know what? If members aren't comfortable yet, then you're not comfortable yet.
I would like to take you upon the opportunity of visiting personally with it and discussing, because I, I do see where you're going. I, I like the direction it's going. I'm not comfortable yet that we're, that we are where we need to be, or where at least we, where I can vote on it.
I understand.
At this point, and I can't support it. There's much of it I do like, there's parts of it that's like, I don't buy it yet. So, I would love to do that, and my preference would be, let's wait 30 days. Let's, and let us have an opportunity to visit and talk. I don't, maybe we can't come up with any. Maybe it's just one of those frustrating points, but I'd like, at least like to give it a try.
I certainly, listen, I'll come back as often as you like with this. I will tell you, just to be clear, we've put together an ordinance that kind of walks a very fine line between what we believe is adequate under a federal law, and what a federal judge would say is inadequate. And so, my job is...
And it focuses just on land use. That's all we're talking about.
Land use only.
Not regulating any of the industry, just land use.
Can I give you a line to look at on this? Word to draw a line?
Yes.
If I'm a business, and I'm just renting the house to a disabled person, I see your point. You can't discriminate between a disabled versus a non-disabled person in that context.
Yes.
However, if I'm an operator, and I'm going to provide some sort of care to that disabled person, I think that draws a line right there, as to the operator. Not to the disabled person, but focusing on the operator at that time, because obviously, if they're holding themselves out as some type of caretaker, I think that's where the line needs to be drawn, just as a suggestion.
And I, and I appreciate your suggestion. I, we have looked at that. I mean, believe me, I've beat that one to death, trying to justify a different look. And I will tell you that I can't come up with an argument that would be justifiable under the case law, as I now read it. I think it's a fantastic suggestion, and I, I followed that one, and tried to, and literally tried to find a way to differentiate the operator from an owner. The fact of the matter is, as long, as long as we allow people to own and rent to non-disabled, we can't treat, we can't treat the operator, the owner, differently. I mean, under, under the state of the law, the way we read it, and the way Clark County has also read it.
Would it be appropriate for, I mean, since you've made the presentation, I think a lot of the questions are answered, and we understand that if we could hold this for, till the next meeting, give you a chance to meet with any of the members and answer any further questions, I think, and then we could...
It's at the discretion of this board.
Move on it at that time, and I think we can better address your concerns as well.
Listen, I, this is, this is before you. You decide. I don't press the buttons. And so, if you want to hold this for 30 days, and we, I can schedule some meetings with you guys, absolutely. It, it's important that I make it clear why it is we're here. And if I haven't done that tonight in this, in this presentation, I apologize. And if you'd like to hold it for 30 days, please do. And then, Mr. Ellsworth, Mr. Flengus, anybody that wants to meet, or I, you know, I can come over to your place, or you can come down here, and we'll, we'll go through these books.
Well, I mean, I, I understand. We're not, we're not here to rewrite the ordinance. We're, I mean, I think we, the board is prepared to make a recommendation based on, on that, I would suspect. It's just, I think there's still a few concerns and questions. It just, the better this is understood, the better we can...
One thing I could offer, maybe, is that if we move forward tonight, and then, in between now and council, now and recommending, I can meet with those of you that want to meet. And then, you would have my word, that if there were still concerns, that we could, well, Margot, you tell me if, if this would work. If there were still concerns, we could re-agendize it on a future planning commission meeting. But if there were no concerns, then we would just move forward in May.
I think what would ha, if I may, I think what would happen is, before it goes to recommending, you'd have the introduction.
Yes.
And if there were still concerns, the council could, at introduction, send it back to the planning commission.
Send it back. I'm trying to find a way to, to kind of do two things. One, there are lawyers that, on the other side of this issue, that think that there's a time, a timeline for consideration. But at the same time, like I said, you push the buttons. If you're not comfortable, I don't want you pushing the green button. So, whatever you feel comfortable with is absolutely okay with us. And what I would, what I will do, if we do, if we do hold this for 30 days, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk with those of you that want to talk with me, and I'm going to, I'm going to redo the presentation to make sure I very specifically answer the questions that come up in our conversations. But, what I will say won't change, which is, I don't want us going head-to-head with HUD, a federal court, when we know that a federal district court judge has already declared what we do violative. So, that, that part of the equation won't change. So, anyway, whatever you're, whatever you desire, I'm, I'm good to do.
Then, commissioners, if we could, Mr. Trowbridge?
Not to, not to belabor the point, but I would like to thank you for an excellent presentation. I think you've done a great job of researching it, and working with the groups of concerned citizens and staff that are, spent a lot of time on this particular issue. The fact that we aren't happy with results doesn't change the situation one iota. You know, it's something that we need to do to protect the city and the taxpayers from, from potential lawsuits, which isn't, doesn't look too, too, too happy. We may not like it, but that's the way the courts will in all likelihood rule. A separate issue and aside, though, one of the things that did come out of your, your research is a change to the distance separation requirements, to where we're used to dealing with 1,500 feet, property line to property line. That's kind of our rule of thumb. On this issue, it seems like the courts are saying, that's too restrictive. You've got to tighten it, or loosen it up. And so, you've come up with 660 feet as a vehicular or foot traffic would allow it to be. I'm, I wonder if putting that in some kind of a code is going to become a target for other issues. You know, now, you know, if we have a, one financial institution has to be so far from another financial institution, and we fairly regularly take the situation into consideration and waive that requirement.
Yes.
The same with, you know, proximity to a park or a school, and some of these things that just, you know, oftentimes we're not comfortable with our 1,500 feet, property line to property line requirement. I see that being subject to challenge, and this being a very significant stone that's going to throw at us when we try to hold our feet.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make a quick?
Yes.
I don't answer your question. I understand the question. I think it's a, it's a valid concern. I would say that in, in this case, I'm going to be pointing to, if somebody came to us and say, you know what, we need to reduce our tavern, tavern-to-tavern proximity distance from 1,500 to 660 now, because you did that here. I would, I would be sitting down there with you, saying, don't worry about what we did with regard to group homes, because we did this because a federal court would tell us that 1,500 is, that, that distance proximity relationship is discriminatory. And we, we, there was a necessity to change it, so we wouldn't engender complaints or lawsuits. So, I think I could help this commission deal with that issue, Chairman, Commissioner. Thank you very much, so, for your comments.
Thank you. Motion?
Well, I'll move. I think that it's probably prudent, because of the timelines and the issues involved, that we accept the attorney's offer to meet with us promptly. But I think that under, I, I'm not responding to a threat of litigation, but realities of the situation say that we should move this thing forward. And so, with the understanding that we could meet with you and make adjustments as may be appropriate in regards to item number 51, text number 37, 635, I'd recommend we approve it as submitted.
Okay. If there are any other comments or questions, motion is for approval. Cast your vote. And that is approved, and goes on to the city, city council in ordinance form.
Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much. Commissioner Ellsworth, I'd like to maybe tonight, schedule something with you for next week. And I would make the same offer to anybody else. I will make sure I call the two commissioners that want to hear, to make sure that they have the same opportunity. And thank you for your consideration tonight. I know this is a tough issue. And I just hate to be the bearer of bad news.
Then we don't hold it against you. All right. Now, we go to item 52, TXT 37746, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, discussion of possible action to amend the Union Park Design Standard Manual and change the title to Symphony Park Design Standard Manual.
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, Flynn Fag with the Planning Department. Most of the changes that you have proposed before you are relatively minor in nature. One of the largest ones, however, is of course changing the name of the document itself to reflect the change of the development name that city council approved last year. And so, it will change from Union Park to Symphony Park. And again, all references within the document will also be changed. There are a number of minor changes to the design standards, and then also, we're adding four new uses to Symphony Park, based on some of the requests that we've had from the property owners there. There are two significant changes that I need to point out to you. Number one is the Symphony Park Design Review Committee. What we're proposing to do is to allow them to approve signed waivers. This would be similar to the authority that has been granted to the DDRC, the Downtown Design Review Committee. And so, basically, it's extending that same authority to the Symphony Park Design Review Committee. And then, secondly, also extending the ability of the Symphony Park Design Review Committee to approve minor deviations, which are defined as adjustments in the placement or location of required design standards. Waivers from the design standards would still need to be approved by city council. So, those are the two major changes that we're proposing. And again, the rest of them are relatively minor in nature, and we would request your approval of this text amendment.
Okay. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioners?
Let's just comment. I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of item number 52.
That's right. Motion? Motion. That is approved, now we go to city council in ordinance form.
46.
Now we're going to go back to 46, Director's Business, DIR 37759, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, update long-range planning items.
May we request that, please, to be obeyed to your 5:27 meeting?
Will your slide presentation be ready by then?
Um, yes, it, we have to work on it so that it exceeds that of Mr. Lewis's this evening.
Thank you.
That a motion is to hold that for 30 days?
Please.
So moved. And, and Director, that'll be 21 slides?
We know when we've lost our audience, so we're folding the tent.
Now we come to that part, part of the agenda, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give us your name for the record. Amount of discussion may be limited.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street. I have a question. Do we tax billboards, and if so, how?
There are no separate business licenses on the billboards themselves. There are business licenses required for the billboard companies to operate within the city.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I got time to.
Please ca, please. Meeting adjourned. Jesus.